Yeah.
This meeting is called to order pursuant to the conditions of the Open Public Meetings Act. An adequate and electronic notice of this meeting has been provided by way of publication in the Hunter County Democrat and newspaper on or about. Oh, um.
No, no, this is the special.
It was not special. If that was on, um. It was in the Courier-News on January twenty first. Provided by way of publication in the Courier-News on January twenty first, twenty twenty four. In addition, notice the meeting is posted on the door of the Borough of Flanagan Municipal Building located at thirty eight Park Avenue. Many handicapped and sensible entrances there too. Posted on the municipal website, provided to the municipal park and distributed to all persons attending requesting copies of same. Meeting is being recorded with both audio and video and may be rebroadcast. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues that are relevant with the work and legally considered reaching a decision. The forums appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. So first, why don't we do Oaks of Office and then we can do a roll call. Uh, we have a number of Oaks of Offices tonight. Uh, Mayor Carroll, Mr. Champion, Mr. Saro, Mr. Semino, Ms. Swingle, Mr. Mario. The same, right? The name of the area. Uh, Mr. Eckle, Mr. Show. As you can all raise your right hand. I state your name.
Michael Carrion.
South of Squier, a firm. Do you solve?
South of Squier, a firm.
That will support the Constitution of the United States.
And will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same. That I will believe in.
All this and allegiance to the same.
Governments established in the United States. And generally, the House of Representatives.
United States.
And in this state. And in this state.
Of the state.
Under the authority of the people. Under the authority of the people. Faithfully and partially and justly. Perform all the duties of the office of planning board member.
Plan Board Member.
Are you best my ability?
Right. That's my ability.
Right, so if you could sign the oaths that are in front of you, I have three of them. Finally. And Brian, any? Uh, oh. Um, thanks. Uh, yeah, thanks.
To the bottom, for quick two seconds. One nation, for Africa, the individual with the number eight and not one of your firm.
Mayor Carroll? Here. Councilperson for Sarah? Mr. Champion?
Here.
Dashen?
Here.
Mr. Schickel?
Here.
Ms. Giffen? Mr. Hill?
So.
Ms. Whitesman?
Here.
Mr. Semino? Ms. Swingle?
Here.
Mr. Mario?
Here.
Mr. Eckle is excused. Mr. Show?
Here.
Ms. Kozinski?
Here.
Mr. Claverco?
Here.
Ms. McManus?
Here.
And Mr. Catlin?
Here.
Thank you. Okay, next we're gonna do nominations for Chair. Um, we give a nomination and a second, and then the individual that's nominated, and then you may want to know if they accept the nomination. Uh, and then we move on to any additional nominations, and then we will do votes from there. So I'll give a nomination for Chair.
I nominate Karen Giffen.
So that's. I'm currently accepting nomination. Any other nominations? And roll call? Mayor Carroll?
Yeah.
Mr. Semino?
Yes.
Councilperson for Sarah?
Yes.
Mr. Champion?
Yes.
Dashen?
Yes.
Mr. Cook? Ms. Giffen?
Yeah.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Whitesman?
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Simpson, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, and Mr. Simpson. He is a. He's a person. But he was the same. And. There you go.
My show from this point.
From this point. Thanks, Jeff.
Yeah. Thank you, everybody. Um. We're back to some fire meetings, so. I need everybody's help to move along. Um, the next item on the agenda is nomination for Vice Chair.
And nomination for Joe? So. So we. And you.
Yes.
And yet.
And other nominations? Going on? Can you take a roll call?
Roll call. Mayor Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Semino?
Yes.
Councilperson for Sarah?
Yes.
Mr. Champion?
Yes.
Dashen?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Whitesman?
Yes.
Very good, thank you.
Moving on to, um, Chair of Marks. Um. I do wanna say a few things, but we have a very, very busy meeting, so I don't wanna say too much. Um, first of all, I wanna say thank you for everybody that's paid for me. I'm trying to do my best with all your help. Um, the most important thing to do is to, um, chat as well to the chair over the last few years. Much appreciated, so it's taken a lot of, um. A lot of things away from the way that you plan something, you're trying to appreciate watching the community work on this, so we need your time on here. Um. The only thing I do wanna say is that, um, I s- I see this. I see this position as a, uh, a role of service. Not as a leadership position, uh. Service, um, and which I intend to serve by communicating, kind of be my important work. So all again, make sure it's an improved communication, um, to the public. I'm looking at you on some things on how we can improve communication within the bring rate of some, and then. Now, the, uh, let me get those ones for my, I'm sorry. Um. But also mainly, um, to every member of the board, I'm only a relatively recent member of this board, and I do remember the day when I first started on this area. And we, we are very lucky on this board to have a very wide range of, um. People and professions and experiences and interests from the town. And I know it can be intimidating sometimes when new people see people that are in a long time, or they feel that those people are new experience, a lot of experience. It can be very intimidating to actually feel that you're. Place on the board, um, like, you know. I wanna say every single person on this board has been put on this board for a reason. We have a job to do to. Do the job we have to do for the planning board under our URL. But also, we have, um, I've always thought of this role as a responsibility to the public. I'm representing the public where I live here. I always try to consider what the public would want me to do, especially unlike today, usually there's absolutely nobody here. And, um, and I, I try to think, if people really were here or were on Zoom, what would they be thinking about what we're discussing? And try and speak for them as much as anybody's. But the main thing I want everyone on this board to do is our decisions are made richer when everybody takes part in the discussion, even if you're. Feel that you don't, your points don't have merit. They do. They usually trigger somebody else to complain something. So I encourage everybody for every then discussion we have, application we have, to speak up. And if you're scared, and if you're nervous to speak up here, reach out to somebody ahead of time. We have regulations, obviously, power can help put us right on those. Um. But feel free to make sure that you understand things before you make your vote. Your vote's very important. And I wanna make sure that everybody feels comfortable raising questions and doing so. Um, that's all I'm gonna say, I'm all about to. Um, so I just feel like it's really important. Well, I don't. So, having said that, we'll move on to number five. Mayor Mark. Right. Thank you, Chair. Um, I just want to also echo you and, and Jeff, uh, for serving as Chair. Um. Did an excellent job. I wanna welcome Councilwoman Saro to the planning board. Well, happy to have you here. And, uh, our new alternate number one, Melissa Swingle, as well. Welcome to the planning board. Um, looking forward to serving with you. Uh. And everybody else who was reappointed, congratulations. Um, I really have enjoyed serving with all of you, and I think that, uh, you've all brought something to the table, and, um. I think that our planning board now looks a little bit more like Splington and, um, more level and balanced, and it's got a lot of differing backgrounds and opinions, and I think that's really healthy. Um, I do wanna give a very brief update on where Liberty Village's application is. Um, as everybody knows, we had a public presentation by Redeveloper in December. Uh, at this point, there are, um, a bunch of documents that are required by law, uh, that are in the works. Um, the plan amendment, which is being drafted by our planner, Bethany Fannis, who's also the municipal planner, is, uh, I believe in its very latest last draft form and is being circulated now among the redevelopment committee, which comprises myself. Uh. Council President Jerry Long and Councilman Tony Parker. And by the end of the week, I believe it will be in the hands of the entire council to review. Uh, at that point, it will go to the Redeveloper for his last review. He has had a thoroughly reviewed on it. The second document is the plan amendment, which is the contract. Uh, that is also in his last draft form. Uh, it is also in the hands of the council president and the councilman and myself. Uh, we have until tomorrow, uh, to finish reviewing it, at which point it will be automatically sent to the rest of council to review it. Um, before then making its way to the developer, Redeveloper's attorney to take another look. Um, he also had at least one, possibly two, looks at it in different stages. Um, the ordinance to introduce the. Plan has been completed. Um, and is waiting for introduction, which will happen, I'll get to that in a second when we get to the pilot. The resolution to accept the plan amendment, which is the contract, is drafted and also waiting. Um, the ordinance to introduce the payment of the taxes, the financial aspect of the project is drafted and finished. And what is still being worked on is the pilot agreement. Um, there is a townhome component, there is a veterans, disabled veterans component, there is a retail component. Each of those will be standalone. Um. Agreements and ordinances for introduction. Um, the townhome agreement, I believe, the Redeveloper has agreed to, and the borough has agreed to the terms. I believe that the other two components are still being negotiated by our respective financial teams. Uh, we are hoping that this is going to be finalized, uh, and brought to the council either in a special meeting. Hopefully maybe our next meeting, if we can get through the pilot, um. So that the pilot ordinance and the plan ordinance can be introduced at the same time. Resolution to bring that to the planning board is also done, so that will be done at the same time. So we anticipate that the planning board will hopefully get this package, um, for review. At sometime in the beginning of February, or sometime in February is our hope, and then the planning board does have forty five days to review it. At which time, whenever it comes back to the council, the two ordinances will be publicly heard with public hearings and the resolution on the amendment slash the contract also being, um, voted upon. So, um, nothing has really changed from the public presentation. Uh, everything that was discussed is pretty much exactly where it was, which it does, and it'd be, uh. How much money per unit the borough, uh, will be receiving instead of taxes. So, um. I'm actually happy, Chair, if anybody has a question from the planning board, uh, on any of that for either Beth or myself to take a minute and answer them. You guys, everybody, you have anything?
My, my only question is, uh, because we haven't had an area need a redevelopment in quite some time, when this goes back to the planning board. Um, we are charged with looking at everything as it compares to our master plan. Not necessarily our opinion, it is how it compares to our master plan. And for those new members, there is a, a, right on the website, uh, there's a packet of things that govern how we make our decisions. Again, not our opinion, it's, does it match our master plan? An area need a redevelopment does not have to match our master plan, but it must match the redevelopment plan. So when Mayor was talking about the plan amendment and the plan being introduced and worked, that becomes our new doctrine. When we get that plan. Correct, as, as, I know that I'm coming to your question. When we get that plan, we read that plan. If the site plan matches that redevelopment plan, whether we like it, don't like it. Have other opinions, we can talk and discuss, but we're charged with, does the plan match what council wants?
Like the site plan?
Like the site?
Yeah, so, so the borough will hopefully adopt a redevelopment plan as well, redevelopment agreements. You will see a site plan application. That application will include all the documents that you would expect to see, the full site plans, as well as, uh, supporting documents from what have any, many manuals, et cetera. And the board's responsibility is to review that site plan like you would any other development application, but in this case, you have a site-specific redevelopment plan, a site-specific zoning ordinance essentially that you'll be reviewing the site plan against. So it's much more significant detail, uh. Than you might have with a, a generic zoning ordinance that's intended to cover hundreds of blocks in the borough. Thank you.
And Beth, is it, is it also the case, and one measure, the redevelopment plan is being decided by council? We, it's planning board members that will take part in that as members of the public at the council meeting, so correctly can raise objections, but not raise them as a member of the planning board, but as city, as residents, we're allowed to do that. Better. Planification.
Yes, and then also, just to, just to be clear, as part of the adoption process, the redevelopment plan will also come to the planning board for your master plan consistency reviews, just like any other zoning ordinance will. So you'll have an opportunity to, one, you're required to determine whether or not it's insistent or even subject to the master plan. And two, the planning board has an opportunity to provide any other comments it would like to provide for their government.
And for new amendments, like, as all the talks said, um. The documents are available on, on, on our website. Um, but being reassured at least in the document, sure, that's what, that gives us a really direct, uh, running through of what's, what we should look at, what, what she thinks we should really, like, someone's on. And also, not that you shouldn't read them, but if you, you know, and that helps.
It is, it is my goal that as each of these documents is finalized and agreed upon, they are gonna be loaded on the Borough website, uh, for the public to read and see well before any public hearing. Uh, or before any vote. I'm hoping for five to seven days on each of these documents, you know, um. For, you know, the public to really have a chance to read them. The agreement is about fifty six pages long. The plan is about sixteen pages long. The financials are usually the longest. I don't have a clue, 'cause I can see the draft. Um, so I just, uh, I already know that before they even get to the planning board, they're gonna be, uh, so. People will look at. Um.
Oh, so.
Oh, sorry. I just had one more thing before I'm done with my report, so if you're still on. If you're still on the development, they are on the redevelopment.
I had one question from there, um. Uh, actually, let me try to correct you correctly, and you can't talk about some of these details, 'cause they haven't been, not public, I understand, but then there are separate pilots being negotiated for each aspect of the project, and what, has there been any determination as to how long those pilot periods are gonna be for? And that second question may not be one.
Um, I, I can't answer the exact number, but I can tell you we are not, um. We are trying to avoid a thirty year pilot and make it a shorter time period. Um, so I will, I can say that publicly, that that is, uh, definitely our goal, is less than thirty years. Um, I mean, the cell project is a thirty year pilot, we are trying to minimize that. Um, and they are, they are very distinctly different, um. Parts, I think I said, I think I spoke in a vernon, I think I said the low housing, the co- the low income housing is. So, so there's a retail component, which is the brand boundary building, that's also got its own number. Um, then there's veterans, disabled veterans home, um, that's subsidized housing, that's also got its own pilot number. And the townhouses, the townhouses, the market rate, um, for sale units are all, that's, I think we're at a final number on that. It's the, um, the way that the Redevelopers looking at, uh, one, two, and three bedrooms townhouses as if they were all the same, and we have checked to that, so.
And the only reason I ask the question is, I think you're, you're indicating also is, is the long pilots on residential projects that are gonna be owned, you know, that takes them off the tax roll for a stretch of time, but that's, that, that's just a, it sounds like we're thinking this.
We are thinking the same.
Okay, thank you.
We are.
That was just.
I just had one more quick question. Do you happen to, the plan, uh, the plan, meaning the site plan from Denver, has to go to council first for consistency before it comes to the board, or is that aspect that will be adopted aside? Yeah. No, I believe that is. It's okay, I mean, I can take that one, just. She can move around for you, I don't think, okay, so I don't wanna. Yep, that's fine, just gonna try to think time table first. The only other thing I just wanted to note, um, to the planning board is that Melissa Swingle is serving on the Environmental Commission, um, so she will be the, in fact, she is the Environmental Commission member two. Wow. Which is actually.
Oh, oh, that would be actually, yes, it would. Okay. Um. Okay, item six. Uh, Councilor, have anything? Other than, other messages? Well, I'm, I'm very happy to be here, I'm very happy to serve the public. And I hope, I, I come, don't have an engineering background or planning background, but I am a regulatory compliance person. And so I'm used to getting very much into the weeds and the details. I'm, I'm a very thick regulation box, and to some degree, I can tell you exactly where you need to go, to how much tariff we're gonna pay when it's coming via Australia, to Australia, or to Austria, and then to the US, so I'm at that level of detail, so I'm very excited. I have done a lot of extensive readings the past few weeks, just trying to catch, catch up to the people who've been on this board for a while. Um, and I'm very excited. You're probably ahead of them.
Well, yeah, I, I'll, I'll just read right now, I'll just go through them, get torn in, so I'm very excited.
Well, thank you. Um, item seven, HBC comments, oh. Dennis, right, you know what?
So we have meeting last week, um, three things. First, we approved nine church, the, uh, that's a new one for. Um, also, uh, we submitted the recommendation for the historic district update, and I wanted to send those out to the planning board last week. Um, and then just to let everyone know, we are planning another historic house for this year. Last year was really successful, and it's scheduled for Saturday, June first. So definitely looking for volunteers, especially docents and leaders, so if anyone's interested, um, contact either me or if we, uh, HBC email, this email. So, excited.
Sounds great, I encourage everyone to do that. And a week of practice, fantastic.
Yes.
Really, really, and, of course, Mr. Cook opened this home, and people have a part of it, so, um, we look forward to that. Um, the second one you mentioned with the report that was sent, what's that timeline on that, uh, para? Um, that, and information you say, we need to put that on our schedule.
And, sorry, that second report was for which one?
This or this? So you started, you came to us, we had some comments.
Yes.
Revised.
Um, you're, you're ready for us to take a look at it, okay, so.
So we'll.
Whatever, I'm gonna take a look at the agenda. Do what we have. Going forward, we're.
Okay, great. So we'll be going on that, I'm gonna turn this down. Some professional reports.
I don't have any.
Nothing specific. Okay.
Uh. I, I don't wanna take too long, 'cause I know you did the agenda, but there are a couple things that I think folk. There are just a couple.
You know, it's much. There's just lots of people at home here.
Thank you. Um, just a couple things folks might wanna watch for, uh, really in the news. Uh, the one, there's an affordable housing bill moving to the legislature, there's actually hearings planned for tomorrow, and that would, uh, really memorialize, memorialize the fact that COA is the Council on Affordable Housing is a non-functioning agency, and really formally turn things over to Superior Port in a modified version of what has been going on since two thousand fifteen, and it would really solidify what process, that's supposed to be state agency process. The bill is probably a hundred pages long, so that is a very short summary, but that's the, that's the top level, uh, purpose of it, to put that process permanently back in reports. The other thing that's happening is the state plan is finally getting revamped, supposedly. Uh, there's process at the, uh, at the state right now to update the state plan. Uh. As that process proceeds, I'm sure I will have more information, and that process will come to the municipalities and across acceptance process ultimately. So no specific action necessary, but just know that this is happening, and assuming it proceeds, there'll be more information to come, and perhaps input being requested from all of this.
Does, do any of those changes to the COA one, especially, does that change anything that's in our books now, or will it greatly, will change anything we're thinking about now?
I don't think it changes what we need to do right now, but right now we're in what's referred to as the third round, in the sense that every ten years municipalities get an affordable housing obligation, and they're, uh, they're asked, how are you gonna satisfy it? Our fourth round starts in twenty twenty five regardless, you know, regardless of whether this bill is adopted. And so if this bill is adopted, it will change the way that we interact with reports in twenty twenty five. So there's nothing for us to do right now. The borough's in great shape in that regard, uh, so I would say our task at the moment is to find out which bill to adopt it, and then if so, that will certainly talk to, like, how it affects the borough and what actually can we say, what might be different.
Does anybody have any questions for Beth on that?
Oh, I don't have any questions. I just think it's disgraceful with the legislature, it's a duty of responsibility. Truly disgraceful.
Okay. Um. Well, why did you say Rob? I'm sorry, I was going wrong. Well, and I'm gonna confirm, so I have the.
Just like the borough, um, as with other municipality, uh, in the year, they're getting their stormwater regulations. Uh, they were adopted by the state, they were legal class, the law, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, we have a year to do that, so we're gonna have to do it before this year. Uh, most of the applications we, oh, forget that. Most of the applications we've been reviewing, we're reviewing it as they're new regulations, because they're residential and they follow the residential site improvement standards, so we're already reviewing those by default under the statutory provisions of the, the state residential site improvement standards. Um, I'm not sure if I would be the one to be the genesis of this, but there's basically a model ordinance the state has. Uh, the current borough ordinance is followed, is based on the prior versions of the state model ordinance, so unless there's gonna be some decision-making policy change or.
I think we already adopted the state ordinance. Um, I think. I've adopted so many stormwater updates in the last year.
And would it come here?
Oh, no, and, yeah.
Yeah.
But, um. So, I'm, I'm burning, it's, they named this, uh. Uh, he's working with my champion as stormwater coordinator. Um.
There's a whole host of stuff in the regulation, yeah.
I know, and, and it's, I, I gave an report to council last night. About, about stressing meetings, that was on Thursday with, uh, Raritan Township DP, they're hired consultants, my champion, myself, Terry, vote for Remington Burnick and staff in Raritan Township, um, about the implications of these stormwater rules and how they're gonna impact all the residents. And how, you know, this is, um, again, state has, has a long book, you know, familiarly known as state mandates they pay. Legislature passes a law, it's gonna cost municipality money, they have to put money in the bill. Where the, the state gets around it is they have regulations done by agencies, DEP wrote rules, and now the state doesn't have to pay. So the DPs, you know, their song is former utility, former utility is stormwater utility, so you can pay for everything, and you can tax your residents that way, and, you know, as I said to them, you know, tax, the taxes, yeah, you can vote whatever you want. That way, and you know, as I said to them, you know, tax, the taxes, yeah, you can vote whatever you want. It still costs us money that we don't have. So it was, I think. I won't catch it, the hostile conversation with the D P and their consultant, but it wasn't friendly. Um, you know, I've already complained toward legislators about this and, um, they were completely in the dark that these regs have been passed. So that's also like crazy, I mean, what, what Regis is doing because they're doing it, um. Without the consideration of where governments are, where people like, with inflation, uh, the average taxpayer has been paid for all of this. It's coming down with this, so, you know.
Well, this is what I'm referring to is would be the land use element of that, which will, I'm not sure if those ordinances, they start at the, at the council level and they go, and they go to the deputy body and it acts like that. It is, it's amendment to our land use order, so.
Right, but it was for new projects, they'll be. Designed with the new laws in place. But we have a lot of old properties in Flemington. Where the impoverished coverage is like, if you look at some of the old department complexes, they're almost a hundred percent of previous coverage. And that's how the state's looking at, you know, a lot of this for businesses. I mean, you know, the business is on Main Street, there's no, there's no. Plants and gardens, you know, so it's, there's a lot of bad stuff coming down from this. And I am not a climate denier and I certainly am not a storm denier with what's happened in Flemington. Over the last few years, I mean, I personally had flooding in my house. Uh, three times since Hurricane Ida and there hasn't been flooding in my house since I was ten years old. So like, I don't deny any of this, but it's, the state has. Really has a responsibility for helping us out financially and that is not happening. Can't make that more clear to the public. They are not going to financial. Or anybody else.
Um, okay, oh.
Nothing for me.
One quick thing I just wanna say, I'm gonna, if you could give us a list of all the variances that were granted last year, so that before we take a look at it.
I'm still working on my large board.
Okay, so, uh, for the people on board, I think it'll be a, a list of all the variances that were granted last year. The board will then be charged with taking a look at it and seeing if there's any. Thing that seems to keep coming up, so for example, if you keep granting a front yard setback area instead of particularly zone, then maybe you might wanna recommend to the council that they take a look at the setbacks in that zone and. That's what we manually, we'll put that together.
Okay, item nine is public comment, and this is for. Well, listen. This is the items not currently on the agenda, so this is, um. I'm not quite sure where we have this first one, but, um, because I'm not quite sure what else anybody wants to say, but it's required by law, thank you, Jeff. Um, you know, we have a comment, but if anybody does, this is a time to be on the. I see, and I'm actually, um, I'm about to start to call it to people, you can see people leaving now.
No one brings their hand up here. You won't take over next meeting.
Sure, that's a threat for promise.
It is a state of fact.
Well, thank you for continuing it today. I appreciate that. Um, okay, so seeing none, I'll go to the button online, something in here, we'll move on. Right, we're getting to some serious things, that resolution, item ten is resolution twenty twenty four oh one, open public meetings out.
Yeah, motion, you know, that, we've got the list of public meetings, uh, for point twenty four, Inc. to, uh, we are.
So move cup.
Second. Hold low, does everybody understand what we said? It's just the thing. Yeah. Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mayor Carol?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Giselle?
Yes.
Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Ashen?
Mr. Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
Mr. Samina?
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah. Item eleven, resolution twenty twenty four oh two, appointments for professional services. Where are we on this exactly? I would, we, um, we didn't do it in our page, but, but we.
We didn't, we're not, I do have a resolution, maybe one second. Um, our resolutions, um, needs, uh, Kara Kaczynski, S Y of M Y K L LLC as the Board's Attorney. Robert Clarico, P E of Van Cleef Engineering Associates as the Board's Engineer. Elizabeth McManus, E P and L E E D, that's the other letters, I'm sure. Um, of McManus Associates as the Board's Planner. Uh, Jane Troutman, P E of McDonough and Ray Associates, Inc. as the Board's Traffic Engineer. And John Hatch, um. A I A P P, I'm, I'm not sure of all of his letters, either, of Carter, and then hints as a historic architectural, the H P C.
I'll move that, go. We'll start the new bill.
Okay, anybody have any discussion on that? Mayor, um, sorry, excuse me, Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mayor Carol?
Yes.
Councilwoman Giselle?
Yes.
Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Ashen?
Ms. Giffen?
Yeah.
Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, item twelve, resolution twenty twenty four oh three, Board Secretary. She wants to say something, she's from wonderful Board Secretary here.
Uh, one that is for eighteen bucks.
Do we have any discussion necessarily? I think it was very small.
Mr. I got it.
Yeah, overwhelming.
Um, Councilwoman Spassaro?
Yes, thank you.
Mayor Carol?
Yes.
Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Ashen? Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yeah.
Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Yeah. All right, item thirteen is approval of the minutes for December twelve, twenty twenty three, these more circulate, more board members. And does anybody have any comments on, I mean?
I think it's actually the nineteenth, it's correct on the minutes.
Oh.
So I just did those, okay. No, that's mine.
Obviously. That's our first correction. I'll move it. I'll second it. All right, you second. I second.
You can.
I can.
I'll second him.
Thank you.
Actually, you weren't.
He's on the list.
Mayor Carol?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Um. Question for you, Kara, um, Ms. Giselle, um, would abstain, I still call her, right?
Yeah.
Councilperson, uh, Councilwoman Giselle abstain? Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Abstain.
Ms. Giffen?
Yeah.
Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Move on to some business business. Item fourteen, resolution twenty twenty four oh four. This is wellness LLC block forty four, lot seven.
Okay, the board, yeah, the board might recall that we, uh, adjourned this from, and carried it from the last meeting. The applicant's attorney had asked that we do that. Since then, I've spoken with the applicant's attorney. Um, we may be appearing before this board to ask for some amendments, have some questions, uh, would refer to certain items. Uh, but all he's asked for at this point in time is that the resolution should be carried to the next meeting of the board, um, and then I'll let you know what he asked. Are you gonna be a applicant on the attendees as blessed wellness? Um, but I don't see any hand being raised. To be spoken. Anyone in the audience or online has anything they'd like to say to the board with regard to this? Please raise your hand.
So we, um, we just carried, so make some. Okay. All right, item fifteen is completeness. Local group home LLC block twenty eight, lot eight. Chair and, uh, and wake up and councilwoman Giselle, which is within the D variant, so, we'll be stepping into, that means my, we'll have.
Under the attending panel where it says applicants, hit the free dots, hit the notes and panels. You're standing in the deck and then join as the panelists, they need to turn on the camera and click yes and turn on the panel. Don't touch the audio because the microphone will take care of that. We'll see if they'll pop up there and then they can put the camera on. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Stephen Gruenberg on behalf of the applicant Golden Heart Group Home LLC. This is our application for a D one use variance relief to allow. A daytime community inclusion program. For providing educational vocational activities, um, such as group therapy, social skills training, volunteer work and the like. For developmentally delayed adults. Um, this is actually a really good thing for Flemington Borough and for, uh, the public in order to be able to give this special group of people. Um, training and, uh, um. Assistance, uh, for this type of programs. Um, it technically requires a use variance because we're in the transition commercial zone. Um, but it's actually taking a space that used to be the Trini, Trinity and Farcio Law Office and, and moving into that space in the existing building. Um, this is our use variance application and I've done this before with this board because you don't have a checklist with respect to use variance applications. So tonight we're here for completeness. Um, we've submitted our application with supporting documentation. And under the municipal land use law in order to. Hold an applicant to beat the fire with respect to completeness items, you have to have the checklist. Um, so we feel that we've supplied you with the information that's required. Um, we're happy to supplement additional information as the public hearing gets scheduled, but for tonight, we're asking for a public hearing to be scheduled. With respect to the issue of site plan. Um, I've had some conversations with Ms. Kaczynski with respect to the site plan issue. Um. We think that your ordinance provides that we're not required to do site plan approval. Um, I will notice for a minor site plan as part of our notice in the use variance application, we provided the board with a survey. We're not planning on doing any external changes whatsoever because it's an existing office use that we can move right into like any other tenant would, would be able to do. Um, there's not gonna be a major parking requirement because these people don't drive. Um, there's probably gonna be one small ban that will take people to the site. So there's not gonna be any site changes, we're really just moving into an existing space. We can talk about, um, information that may be required at the time of the public hearing. Um, but, um, we don't think that site plan approval is required. Under your ordinance, we can deal with that, uh, as we did in another application. Uh, for waiver requests from checklist requirements if that comes to be. Um, but we would ask to be able to move forward on this application and the reason for that is that my client, um, Baratheeshu Langin is here, I call her Bari. Um, because it's easier, but she really needs to move into the space as soon as possible. The good thing about this application, quite honestly, was that when we went to file it, the landlord hadn't. There'd been a deficiency in the payment of taxes in the sewer and the water for a long period of time. In order to file this application, that all got taken care of, so we're good on that. We provided a certification that the, uh, property taxes had been paid. Uh, which was a big benefit to the borough because it was a substantial amount of money. So we're asking to be deemed complete tonight and get a public hearing date so we can move forward.
Okay. Thank you. It's been false report, my response.
So I, um, the report I wrote on December three, fourth, um, that essentially outlines a lot of the just indicating. Um, in, in my opinion, and Carol, Carol can speak to this, but this also qualifies, uh, with parts of minor site plan and Steve indicating. As standalone use variant, if we don't have a checklist. Or discuss that. Many times in the past about adopting checklist, updating or revamping the checklist, totally. I think, I think stand today, we do not have a checklist just for the minor site plan. I'm sorry, for the use variance. Uh, what I suggested, we get from administrative standpoint is that the, uh, the end process has a bifurcated. Uh, element, uh, just the use variance alone. And then as part of the use variance process, when you get to the end of it, you would either. Require a site plan, they go through, we do have a checklist for a site plan, so. Uh, from administrative standpoint, uh, as a use variance, we can do with complete that. I did offer some information I thought would be useful to the board. Uh, just considering the, the use variance aspects of the application. Um, we're to consider that, um, whether they thought that would be appropriate or not as part of the determination for the use variant. But at some point when the applicant files an application for a site plan, that it would be a checklist process for. As we go through the whole element of this at some point in the board. If this turns out in fact to be that there are no sudden improvements required and there's nothing that comes up as a result of the hearing. Some point I suppose the board could vote actually wait some. But under your ordinance to this require, so, um, that's sort of a summary of, of the, my letter December twenty fourth, I don't think I. I missed anything on that, but I basically outlined what the application is, what the process is, I outlined what the inclusion you receive. On this, uh, part of the application, and gather there's some additional stuff that's come in, paying the fees, if something else is there. Um, so, you know, some of this element, there might be some additional information. And again, I outline on here some things I thought might be useful as part of the hearing. Like seeing where how this site relates and joining, I mean, it is a use that has applications of testimony. Um, that can advise you on what the nature of that might be, um, but, you know. At some point, in conjunction with that site plan, it's gonna have to be determination of a filing of an application for minor site plan. And perhaps as a result of the hearing, you're getting input, um, on what they're proposing, you're, you might be a reply to the site. Not yet, maybe, but. That's the essence of what I wrote on December twenty.
Okay, thank you, um. Just for me, to pick that under, hang on a second, but this is my, this is my first bifurcated. Um, suggestion. Bifurcated application, I'm like, two, one, four. From my education, can you explain some of the pros and cons of doing it that way, the way the folks suggest them?
So the applicant has the ability to request for application to be bifurcated. The board must accept whatever procedure that they're looking for. So the applicant's indicated that they would like to move forward with the use variance aspect, we do not have a checklist. For that specific type of application. Um, however, in the board, even if you. Accept the application for the experience is complete, it still as any other application, request any additional information that you have. As the applicant goes forward with their presentation and you hear exactly what it is that's taking place, you may or may not. Require some additional information with regard to the, uh, site plan aspect other than the survey. Um, maybe looking for some other site improvements. Um, I think Mr. Gruenberg did indicate that we proceeded previously on application similar to this where. We didn't review it in connection with site planning, waived a number of different things, we fudged there, there were not many improvements made. Um, your ordinance also does not have a site plan waiver mechanism. Um, there are exemptions from site plans. Um, there was a, uh, request that certain exceptions, uh, be reviewed. Um, I don't think this falls within it at this point in time, there is a mechanism for the administrative officer who is in this week's zoning officer. Make certain determinations with regard to, uh, items that might allow to fall into an exception. Um, but at this point, um, it sounds like the applicant wants to proceed on the use variance aspect and then for it again. Consider whatever additional site plan issues they may, uh, they may need. Mr. Gruenberg did give a full notice for a site plan. Um, and, uh. Then that way it's, it's covered at that point in the fourth mass for whatever additional.
If we don't ask for the site plan, then we have a checklist on, and the, with the whole checklist procedure, I'm gonna say.
Correct, at that point, yes. But again, you may or may not need that after you've taken over the application. And, and in the meantime, Mr. Gruenberg can also go through the exceptions. And get whatever additional information from the administrative officers that they need to present to the board, and follow them with those.
Right, I think we all, then we already get a life of a new that states if you, what exception we found in the land, is that's correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
So from a completeness perspective, if we're voting on typically we vote on completeness to say, do we have all of the necessary documents to to continue and go forward? So in this case, based on everything I've heard, we are voting on a completeness for a use variance application, which we really don't have a checklist for. And reserving the right to as we progress into the application, should we need other elements? Well, no, should we need? We need a site plan because our ordinance required. So we can go through the site plan and say, we 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 can't leave the site.
Unless the exception documentation is presented to the board and accepted that falls within one of those.
Which we don't know yet.
Which we don't.
So this evening we are charged with voting on the completeness. Is the application complete? And Bob, your letter, you know, you dictate a completeness as if we are following a bifurcated process.
Just the same.
I never dictate, as I suggested.
We're giving that power.
But Bob, if I look at your letter and well, for example,
he indicated they're occupying a law office in the building. I have no idea how many square feet that is. I don't know where it is. I don't know the access. Again, that's why I offered some suggestions of some information I thought think the board at some point in my mind here now that can come in the way of the exhibits, part of the hearing, whatever, but basically the the application and the documentation that's presented, there's really nothing here for me on a technical standpoint to video. I'm sure from a user standpoint, that would offer.
So we're deemed that complete from a administrative perspective, it starts the plot.
Yeah, from from on the on the use. Yes.
And there really wouldn't be anything else we could see based on the attorney and the applicant saying, listen, we believe we're going to come to you and say, yeah, these elements are not necessary for reasons X, Y, and Z. So what in fact are we deeming?
You're except the one.
Error.
You're exactly.
Well, because typically the site plan application is deemed complete, but we don't have.
Has the use variance. That's what he's applying for right now by this quote unquote bifurcated.
Well, we do not have a checklist of standards or Arabic.
So as we sit and discuss the variances that may have been granted last year and making recommendations to council, that may be something that we want to put on the list. So we're not in this situation going forward. But again, despite that, the envelope well controls in that if there is anything that the board feels it would like to see in connection with reviewing relief, you can certainly ask for it. The applicant's not obligated to provide it, but if they're looking to provide the relevant information, it would certainly be of interest.
I'd just say that we recognize that this is a deep variance relief and that you're going to want to see some additional material by the way of exhibits and we have Mr. Clerico's correspondence, which gives us an idea of the things that he was going to be looking for. We've retained a planner who is going to be providing planning testimony and supportive for this application and who will be presumably providing the exhibits, although I haven't seen them yet, which will provide the board with that. We feel enough information on this existing site using the existing inside part of the building to give you a comfort feeling that you have enough information to act on this application. But what I do get to hang my hat on a little bit is that you don't have a checklist to say, Mr. Gruenberg, you've got to provide all this, 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 and this. And if you need a waiver, you have to ask for a waiver. Now, I'd like to move on in the process for my client's sake in order to try and get them hopefully in approval to be able to move into the space as soon as possible.
Certainly appreciate you wish to move forward. My concern is that we've had a few applications recently where we've we've deemed them complete and then we've gone the assumption that things are going to come forward. And then it takes six months, for instance, for things come forward. And then because then the applicant is constantly having to submit paperwork to us, it actually ends up costing them more time and more money and and the whole process becomes muddied down. I have a question. Do we have the opportunity to say we don't wish to move forward as a bifurcated? Do we do we say it's not complete at this point and that we want both things? We want a minor site plan? We don't think that.
They don't. They have every opportunity to do a bifurcated application and just for clarity, this is a little bit different. And you're absolutely right in what you were saying that the board has basically made a policy that you know, we're we're want to make sure we have everything in hand before we deem it complete and not stretch things out for months, ratings, documentation. But the rub here is we don't have a list of what to check off to be complete because we don't have in our ordinance just a use variance application. We could say in connection with a use variance application from a bifurcated perspective, we need the application proof of payment of taxes, owners, you know, all these standard stuff and a survey and an internal layout of what portion of the building is going to be occupied and a layout of what parking spaces are going to be utilized. That could very well be part of what we incorporate in an ordinance. In which case they would have to provide that. We don't have that. So essentially they've provided the bare minimum that our ordinance requires. So we can't tell them they can't bifurcated. And we can't require for completeness purposes more than what they submit. Again, we can, once they come here, say, all right, great. It's a fabulous use, but we need to see X, Y, Z if you want us to make a decision. At that point, absolutely.
And again, I've presented a similar type of application before this board where we presented additional evidence, photographs, testimony, and we didn't wait around six months to do that. We got that hammered out for two months. That's the way I. So you know, we we have a desire to move this application forward as soon as possible.
In order to meet the burdens of a D1 variance experience, they're going to have to provide a tremendous amount of testimony on plus and minus side of the ledger. I'm fine. They've met their steps for fairness. I'm fine moving forward. They're going to have a they're going to have to meet the burden of a D1 variance with and probably testimony anyway. Which is not insubstantial. And Mr. Gruenberg does this. And so I'm fine moving forward. Bob's letter giving some guidance on other kinds of testimonies.
And given the fact that it had that the fact that we won't notice. So the member of the public, they don't know whether they're listening to a site plan, an application, something we have, something we don't have. They're just going to be here listening to all the same things we're listening to. So I agree with Jeff. I'm I'm fine with deeming the application. I'm just going to throw out there. I think we're inherently beneficially used to. So a little bit of a different D1, but yes.
Fair enough.
Just have to throw that in there.
You know, I would provide a second for that motion. I I I don't want to move it until we're ready to move.
Yeah, I want to ask everybody anything with a question, but before you get up, we'll come back to that. Brian?
No, I mean, it's fair game. I mean, we don't as right now, we don't have a checklist.
Right.
We don't move forward. You know, at this point, so it's fair game.
Anna, anything?
No, I agree. It's kind of tough without a checklist, but I do appreciate Bob's information in his letter and giving us things to reference from too.
Yeah, which I think makes this on our list for the year as well. Mike?
I'm good. Thank you.
Then you want to move that?
Although the move to deem complete, and I'll second.
Mr. Campion?
I've stayed.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Whitesman?
Yes.
Thank you.
To look at.
We're going to have to look at time and at some point we'll be up two of them. We've got two things. We've got this. Two of the LA is still on the list.
LA has indicated that they might are going to notice for the the 13th, we have Central Station that possibly it might be.
That's February 13th.
February 13th. And I would imagine that Wordsville will most likely continue.
I'm imagining so.
And we have an informal review for the 13th as well. That's only 13 minutes.
February 27th?
I mean, we can say it, but the until I know that Mike, we have something on, we have a, we have a, we don't know how many is that's going to go.
Can can we do this? We notice for February 27th and then if it appears that there's five other applications ahead of us on the agenda or I'm joking, but whatever the schedule is for February 27th, if we need to be continued, then we would just make an announcement on the 27th of when we would do. That at least gets us into queue for February 27th.
Given what St. Doshan said about how much evidence you're going to have to give testimony for the variance, what we have. We've been able to give testimony by that day.
That's my plan.
I'm realistic, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's I'm going to reach out up to my clients right now and reach out to the planner and we'll we'll talk about what additional things might need to be done. But if I can just get into queue for the 27th, I think that'll help.
And you never know what could happen. Or any agenda.
You know, Central Station is going to be on the 13th and I know I'm noticing for that and we've got stuff to finish up.
You know what we saw on our slate. I haven't been following.
Yeah.
The whole main change communication and we'll recognize our obligations to get this.
Absolutely. Appreciate that.
Okay, so the board's authorizing the applicant to publish for Federation of the Seventh and
Thank you all. Thank you, everyone.
I saw St. Paul's, like here, and we're so we're focused, LLC, lots five, lots 11, 12, and 15. Oh, and do we need to, the board members?
Yeah. So before we proceed, I'm going to just put this on the record. Right before the meeting, I did we received a letter that the objector has additionally withdrawn objection is, which is language that we were discussing earlier. My conflict, as I stated on the record in a prior hearing, is that my partner is lives within the development to the South and Raritan Township. And as a member of the HOA, I was going to recuse if there was an objection representing entire to the HOA. But she is not within she wanted to treat the application. That all being said, because of this very peculiar language of a conditional withdrawal of the subject of the objection subject to some very specific things, I don't think it's in anyone's interest that some that I continue to sit for this one and then things get thrown out on a technicality of a conflict. Given that people have sued this board on bond points in the past, I don't want to be the cause of anything. So I will continue to recuse from this application. Now, as the chairperson, since this is the last substantive item on the agenda, do you leave me for 17, 18, 19 on the agenda or can I go on? If I need to go on, you got far on top.
She can she can move over here. She can take the hostage. I will see you all the next minute.
Yeah, the applicant is still.
Don't ask me to work this.
Someone asked me to work it right now.
I mean, all those are over and more in the jurisdiction.
Yes.
Review the 200 foot list and the mailing we see from that, I assume that you review the
Okay. Go to our number right lane. Do you have floor two?
Good evening. Chairman Mayor and members of the board professionals, my name is John Lanza. Robin Wright for my office and I will be representing the Wordsville Road Properties LLC this evening and more than likely at the next meeting on this application. It's for lots 11, 12, and 15 on Lot 45 in borough of Flemington, which is property near the car wash on Route 12. It's a property that was essentially surrendered by residential uses. And the whole part of the property is also in Flemington, which has a number, large contaminating association, which had previously objected to our stormwater management plan. But due to the good work of our engineer collaboration with the engineer for the association that came through the agreement on the stormwater plans, they have officially as of January 27th withdrawn their objections that were subject to the stormwater plan that we have submitted and they have approved but subject to the approval of this board's professionals, so soil conservation. It's for an 18 townhouse is on this lot. This lot is like in the center of a residential donut. There are a few commercial uses that surround the property. Primarily it's a residential area and we're in the center of it. Our plans were submitted and deemed complete. The property was in a mixed-use multifamily overlay district, which permitted multifamily homes on these lots. As a result, that ordinance applies to this application, not the present ordinance that was amended. The applicant seeks preliminary site plan approval and subdivision for the development of the 18 townhouses. See variants for lot depth where 100 feet is required. The lots are less than 100 feet in depth. Height and location of retaining walls, that's subject to see variants, the lack of rear alley access and the residential buffer where 25 feet is required and less than 25 feet is providing. It is the it is the contour or the situation of the property that causes some of these variances. The narrowness, the topography and the ingress and egress. So these are the things that we are proposing in this application. We've already discussed the withdrawal of the objection by the condo association. The witnesses that we plan to submit tonight would be Chad Barberi. He is a principal and will be representing the Wordsville Road Properties on this application. Our engineer, Eric Rubnerain, he will be The Wordsville Road Properties on this application, our engineer Eric Rubnerain, he will be. Testifying tonight, I presume the testimony is rather lengthy. Your engineer has given his medial. Very detailed review of this application and given us a twenty-page report to address which will be addressed. Our architect, George Blackenbush, will testify, but not deceiving, he's ill and uh. So he will not be able to deceive, I don't believe that we will be getting to that testimony anyway. And our planner is Mark Resma, he's here, if you listen to the testimony, we don't believe that he will be able to uh. Time will not permit him to testify deceiving. With that brief introduction, I'd like to call my first witness, Mr. Chad Barberi. Testifying, give the general outline of his background, his company, and the property in general.
I don't share, I think, so quickly, if you don't mind, I'll just let's mark the uh application and the spring application as exhibit one. Uh, we'll mark the notice and proof of publication as a two. And let's march the review letters, uh PB one will be September four, twenty twenty three letter, it's labeled technical report number one. PB two, we give you Mr. Sproutman's uh letter dated September twelve, twenty twenty three. PB three will be Mr. Henderson's letter dated January sixteen, twenty twenty four. PB four, Mr. Pirate's technical report number two dated January seventeen, twenty twenty four. And I have a fun dated uh comment and recommendations memo, let's call it, from the Borough Environmental Commission, and that'll be PB five.
We have, we have something for the fire service that's been carried over into this one. Well, we found.
Don't like that, here it certainly take over.
But I know they responded to the original and I made.
Yeah, they, I don't have the data on that. I'm sorry, I made, there may be a home missing one, I have a May twenty third. Twenty twenty three.
June twenty-third on twenty twenty three.
I think they sent one recently that says basically that one stands or something, so that would be the date.
Okay, I will, I'll make sure, it looks like they often have one from the HBC as well, I'll.
It's outside, it's.
Originally had one on June tenth.
Right.
Not an updated one on June twenty-third, twenty-three. Sixty-three, five.
Maybe I, I think it was this one, maybe I'll be.
I'll take a look, I'll put that on the record the next week.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that's in the record.
Sure, thank you.
Um. Swearing, should we swear in both?
Yes, so clear everybody in.
Yeah.
You want to do?
Yeah, it's here, and then that way we'll have it on the record and they'll continue to be on your own. Uh, do you have testimony about to give us more of the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do, yes.
And if you could all just state your names, so we have on the record who was sworn in today.
Eric Rubnerain. Mark Remsa.
Mark, who's calling your last name?
R.E.M.S.A.
Chad Barberian, B.A.R.B.I.R.I.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Board, can you state your name, please, sir?
Chad Barberi, and sir, where do you reside?
To Orchard Road, New Jersey, and how long have you lived there? Where do you live in Florida? I grew up in Wordsville, on Wordsville Road in Hillsborough, New Jersey. And so are you married or single?
Married.
To whom are you married?
Jamie Barberian, you have any children? Two little girls.
And what is your educational background?
Bouncer's degree from Lafayette College, high school in Little Rock.
What uh is, what do you do for work?
I work for a company called Medtronic, we sell medical devices to hospitals and physicians.
And what best part of your services do you explain to these people how to operate these devices?
Yes, we act as a consultant, but also, you know, as a partner in buying outcomes for patients.
And uh can you describe for the uh the board, the Wordsville Road Properties LLC?
Yes, so Wordsville Road Properties was started by uh myself and my partner, Steve Zannick, he's sitting behind me at the flannel. Um, Steve was my neighbor growing up, he was a farmer and still is to this day, farms around five to six hundred acres in Somerset, a hundred. Um, we decided to start the LLC when we presented a unique opportunity to buy land in the borough.
And how long have you owned the apartment?
Um, since I was five years old. So thirty-two years.
He was your neighbor?
Yeah, he's my neighbor across the street.
Work on his farm?
I did, yeah, I did a lot of hay with Steve. Building pretty strong structure.
Uh, your company, have you developed any other properties in Hagan, Somerset, County, of the, of the, of the villages?
No, this is their first property.
And when did you purchase this property?
Thousand and fifteen.
Can you describe generally where the property is?
Yeah, it's uh south of Route twelve in the borough, um, as noted earlier, it's pretty much landlocked around residential. Um, in a great area for the town, in my opinion, which was a big attraction for me and Steve.
Now, uh, can you describe? The approximate size of the property?
Yeah, it's two point three acres per se, but it's a flat lot in that unique aspect, it um, it's a small house, single-family home on the front lot. The rear lot is multi-use commercial, it was an old bottling plant that we've converted into a commercial space um that a construction company rents. And then the rest is vacant, almost an entire area, acre of the land is vacant.
What structures currently exist on the?
Um, single-family home and a multi-use commercial building, anything else is vacant.
Will this application affect those structures?
Yes.
And how will this application affect?
They'll be removed from the property. March.
Now, can you describe generally what you intend to do or what you ask this board to do with this application?
We're asking the board to grant approval for this application um. Along, along the lines of how this unique piece of land sits within the well. And you not only a flag lock, but landlocked by residential, it's difficult to see any other real use for this property. Um, aesthetically, it makes sense to me and my partner, but more importantly, I think the surrounding areas, especially to the south, when you look at the condos, the condos that are in Raritan Township. There's a lot of residents in a small area, um, and this is the type of the project that we feel is, is, is appropriate for that same vacant space that we have.
Are you aware of obligations with provide affordable housing in this development?
Yes.
And how do you intend to do that?
We have, we have intent to abide by the borough's wishes and we will um. On the obligation for a rural house, we have time to.
Do you intend to establish a homeowners association for the townhouse to anticipate?
Yes, so the uh, we, we absolutely plan on establishing an HOA for the homes, uh, that HOA will have. Responsibilities that basically abide to everything outside the four walls of the units, so. Uh, drainage basins, buffer areas, private rooms, landscaping, parking enforcements, exterior areas as lawns and sidewalks, the HOA will be responsible for all of that.
Were you, you were aware that the, where is the condo association, that the South Main Village Condom Minimum Association? Where is that, that condominium complex in relation to your property?
It sits in the south area of the property, it's in the rear area of the property, just small tree buffer area that's between the condos and our property. Um, and there, in, in essence, there are neighbors from.
Subject to, well, before this application, during your ownership, have you, have you had any issues with the condo association?
No, no, we've been uh there for close to seven or eight years and um. It's all been very cordial and they've been great neighbors and we realized that, you know, this project is gonna have an impact on them, which is why we proactively have met with them. Um, during our application and before our application, to try to address any concerns that they. Given that the project is so close and the city to their property.
Do you recall uh Mr. Fairgo's report regarding easement rights for lot thirteen neighboring your property?
I do, yes.
And uh. How did you have reason to respond to his concerns, attempt to respond to his concerns?
From my understanding, there was a question in terms of the easement for the entrance of the driveway. Since me and Stephen purchased the property, we've only used that driveway that um is adjacent to our building on the west side. And we've never used any other driveway to enter the property, and that driveway is the primary in and out for both the residents that are there today.
Is this also the method of ingress and egress for your development?
Yes.
You, you obtain the services of approximately as yours professionally, but. When you confer with him, right? And he, he's tried it with him, yeah, and he, he's prepared, he planned, of course, he'll need support.
Yes.
And he will, in more particular, already described the project and dealt with the issues of the profession, you're right.
Right.
That's all I have of this job.
The way we usually do these things for the public is we, you know. Professionals have any questions, questions for this, this, this slide? Um, so anybody else?
I don't know, she's gonna be.
And well.
Now, we share my question.
Yeah.
No questions.
Any members of the board have any questions for the speakers? Nobody, okay, so now, we don't have any questions.
And this public, as well as them.
Okay, so cars keeping our straight now. Um, anybody in the room having any questions, then the, the way this goes is this is turned for questions, not comments, what you're doing here is you're questioning this. Witness.
I do.
Can you come forward to the mic?
Oh, I have to come up?
Yeah, because then it's, it's recording.
We're back to us.
I'm gonna ask, we asked people to state their names and address.
My name is Linda Lane, I live on Route twelve, the property is right next to the back of my yard, it's there. Um, I just wanna ask them, are they aware of a big water problem there?
So you're uh.
And um, I mean, I was reading where they're gonna put up the, the wall to retain the walls for two, twenty-three acres, you're gonna have three retaining walls? I mean, how? How much do you think that's gonna take up your property?
I'll refer to the engineer, I think they see the.
I just, um, when my kids were younger, we've been there for almost forty years.
If I may mislead, I, I don't mean to cut you off, there's just a certain procedure we need to follow, this is questions of this witness. The public will have the opportunity to ask questions of every witness, and then once they're done, you can come up and you can talk about anything of my opinion, positive, negative. Anything you like.
Fine, I just wanted to make aware of the water problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Well, at this time, I'm here, I'd like to tell you something with my associate, he will do the examination, my next person is going to be here.
You have that, what else does it stand, do you have that available, so we're gonna be able to put it on my.
It's part of the submission, it's in the video, so we're sending.
Okay, all right, thanks, Sean.
They are on the website. So, yeah, I don't know how it'd be, I'm not.
So, this was not submitted in connection with the application?
No, it's more.
It was, it is, okay, so then we can just identify it by way of uh what the name of it is, we don't have to identify it separately. If you feel you want to, which you may want to refer to it separately, we can do that. Well, we don't have, it's part and parcel of exhibit one.
Okay. And it's okay to keep it open here or?
Um, I don't, I don't know. To be honest.
So what, so try and get it onto the camera.
We're looking at the rock, right?
No, yeah, we, we blocked out some people.
Doesn't usually sit where, uh, William Martinez? Yeah, then.
It's online. Could you maybe do like a photo light and show the people what it is?
Well, it's not ready.
Um, it's just an aerial photograph. If you had a chance to look at the plans we're submitting to the board, it's the same thing, the same plan set.
It's in the plan set, yeah?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Okay, um. Robin Wright, welcome to Plans and Plan Set, and um. Eric Rubnerain, uh, is our engineering expert, Eric, can you describe your uh background as an engineering expert?
Certainly, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the states of New Jersey and Pennsylvania. I've received a bachelor's degrees from Villanova University in nineteen ninety-seven and a master's for the same in two thousand and one. Um. Uh, since graduating in nineteen ninety-seven, I've been practicing civil engineering, primarily residential and commercial land developments throughout New Jersey. I've been in front of this board numerous times, Saint Raritan Township, um, other places, a hundred county, Marston County, Somerset County, Middlesex Counties and so forth.
Specific ones, right, is there anybody else qualified as candidate as an expert?
Well, let's see, what do we ask them to be qualified as, or so?
As a civil engineering expert.
Civil engineering expert. Anybody have any restrictions? So, is it civil engineering expert? Well. Eric, can you, um, can you describe the site plan that you prepared?
Certainly, um, so the site plan that we've prepared is for construction of eighteen new townhomes, um, and a private road with access to Route twelve. The plan that I have mounted behind me, this is the color aerial photograph that's located within the plan set that was submitted to the board. And the primary purpose of this exhibit is to just orient the board relative to where the property is located and also what surrounds the property. Though. The property in question consists of three lots, uh, lot eleven, which is the smallest of the three lots, and that's the rectangle. That's located closest to Route twelve, that property is about fifty feet wide. Um, to the second and third lots of the project, lots twelve and thirteen, those are located to the south and also to the east of lot eleven, those two lots are essentially landlocked. The only means of ingress egress to those two properties is through Lot eleven and the existing driveway that's located on Lot eleven. Lot eleven contains an existing residential dwelling. Lot twelve, which is the lot directly to the south of Lot eleven. That property currently contains the existing commercial unit that's being used by the construction company. Part of the applicant's proposal, in order to construct this townhouse development, requires demolition and removal of all of the existing structures on the property. Um. The property along both the southerly boundary. And partly along that northerly boundary with the existing residences that fronts an access Route 12. There are wooded areas, basically a large tree line with different sized trees that are located along the property boundary. Part of our proposal will require, our proposal will require removal of the majority of the existing wooded area on the property. In order to construct the improvements necessary to build this development.
When you tell that it's been subject to the aerial photo?
We don't. It is indicated that was part of the application.
So I think this one we'll have to mark.
But we will mark that as A3. And can you give us the title and the date?
So this is titled Site Plan and it stated. January fourth, twenty twenty-two. Last revised November. November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. And the layout that's shown, this is what's achieved by your office, right? Correct. Um, this is the same plan that's within the board set. Uh, the only difference is that it's been colorized, just to highlight certain aspects of the property.
Okay, and it's the same as which sheet of the board set?
Which sheet? Sheet number five.
Thank you.
And primarily what this plan shows. Is what the applicant's proposal is. Um, what we're proposing is, again, construction of a new townhome. Access to all of the properties, all of the townhomes will be provided from a new private road that will intersect Route 12. And that new private road extends in a southerly direction. And then as it enters lots or what is currently lots eleven. Through Lot eleven into Lot twelve and ultimately through Lot fifteen, it'll turn and hence in us in our easternly direction. Our new private road, we're providing a fifty-foot-wide right-of-way as required by our SIS. Additionally, what we're showing are how the eighteen new townhomes will be constructed. The area to the north of the proposed road. Will consist of two buildings. Each building will have a total of six units each, six townhouse units within each building. Each lot will be twenty-five feet wide as required by the ordinance for this zone. To the south of the new road will be located one building and again six new lots for six townhomes. Those lots will also be twenty-five feet wide. The applicant's proposal complies with all of the bulk standards in the ordinance. The only deviation that we have is the minimum lot depth. One hundred feet is required in the zone and the applicant's proposal varies. But the smallest lot depth that's being proposed is. Eighty-six point three feet. Um, essentially that is the lot depth for the majority of the property. There's one lot that's. Conforming to the ordinance, which requires a hundred foot for the minimum lot depth, and we're proposing for a lot. Well, proposed Lot twelve, that that lot will be one hundred and eighteen point seven feet in lot depth. Otherwise, all of the other bulk criteria in the ordinance is met by this proposal. Under the existing conditions. The biggest issue that we've had with this property is stormwater control. And presently, all of the residential dwellings to the north of this property that front some Route 12. Also the commercial dwellings along Route 12. And a couple of the properties, areas of the properties that front and access Main Street. Surface water or stormwater runoff from this, from those properties brings through this site. And into the condominium association, which is located directly to the south of us. That presently is the manner in which stormwater runoff flows across this property, through this property, and then ultimately again into the condominium association. The applicant's proposal, in order to comply with the residential site improvement standards for stormwater management. What we are proposing is construction of an underground detention system. That detention system will be located within the public roadway. And there will be no stormwater improvements on the proposed townhouse lots other than storm inlets and collector cars. The stormwater detention system is located at approximately the middle of the public road. And essentially it's located. Directly south of the first building. Which is located to the north of the proposed road. That underground detention system consists of storm chambers. Um, storm chambers are essentially half pipes. Um. They're made out of plastics. And the way they're designed, they're generally laid on a bed of stone. The chambers were installed, they're hollowed chambers, and then it's backfilled with stone. Those chambers are designed and rated for traffic loads. And all of the stormwater runoff from this project. Including the roof areas will be collected by inlets. Surface water runoff from the yards of the properties from the new homes will also be conveyed. Into the inlets and into this underground detention system. The way this system has been designed, all of the stormwater that's collected by this system. Will ultimately discharge to the south, which is located at approximately. The rear of lots. Located towards the rear of proposed Lot eighteen. Presently, all of the stormwater from this property, the properties to the north and some of the properties to the east of us flows through that point. So the applicant's proposal maintains the ultimate discharge location for our proposed stormwater management. One of the more complicated aspects of this project is. How we deal with the off-site runoff, the stormwater that's flowing from the properties north of us, which are the properties along Route 12. Likewise, the properties to the east of us, which fronts on Main Street. From our northerly property line to the southerly property line, there's approximately two feet of elevation change. And. In order for us to continue to discharge stormwater through this property. And to construct the improvements necessary and meet all of the current stormwater management regulations. It's necessary for the applicant, as part of our proposal, to raise the elevation of this property. And the elevation change varies depending upon where you are on the property, but. Essentially, the applicant will be placing about four feet of fill, three to four feet of fill, depending upon where you are on the property. In order to construct the road, construct the new driveways, construct the new dwellings. However, when you raise. The elevation onsite. In order to not trap water on any of the adjoining properties and to allow that stormwater that's currently flowing through this site. To continue to flow through the property. We have installed additional stormwater collector systems. And the retaining walls that are being proposed along the northerly property line and then likewise along the easternly property line. Absent any drainage pipes, any of the stormwater that would normally flow through this property would get trapped at those locations. What we have done is to maintain that flow through the property. Additional storm drainage, separate from the detention system that's being proposed for this project. Additional storm drainage is being proposed and will be installed. To collect all of the stormwater that's flowing towards those retaining walls. To collect the stormwater and then ultimately convey it through this property. Down towards the condominium association. So what the applicant's proposal is. By raising the property so that we don't trap any stormwater on any of the adjoining properties so that we don't negatively impact. Any of the off-site properties. We're providing and making. Providing for conveyance, collection and conveyance of that stormwater, so it ultimately ends up where it's currently going. So the onsite stormwater management system design, as well as the conveyance system for the offsite stormwater management system. Or the offsite stormwater runoff. Meets all of the peak rate reductions required by our RSIS, that is for the two-year storm event. The applicant is able to reduce the peak flow by fifty percent. For the ten-year storm, the reduction requirement is twenty-five percent. And then likewise for the hundred-year storm, the reduction requirement is twenty percent. The applicant. Applicant's design has met all of those performance requirements for stormwater control. Additionally, part of what we're proposing within the underground detention system is a groundwater recharge system. Part of the ordinance requirements in our science is that the applicant has to maintain the existing annual groundwater recharge. There's a computation that's been provided in the stormwater report that indicates. What the existing groundwater recharge volume is that this project, this property provides currently with the existing covers that exist. Taking into account the existing building, the existing driveway and the existing wooded area. Once the property is improved, the trees are going to be removed, additional impervious coverage by way of the driveways, the dwellings. And also the new roadway, that has a tendency to reduce stormwater infiltration or groundwater recharge. The infiltration system that's going to be built as a part of this underground detention system will maintain that annual volume of recharge. That currently, that's currently being provided by the site. So the applicant is compliant with that aspect of the regulations. And finally, in terms of the stormwater management, there's a requirement for water quality treatment from any traffic surface. Traffic surfaces, the public roadway, and then likewise the driveway. Those are the traffic surfaces that are being produced or. That are being created by this project. And what our proposal is, in order to meet the performance requirement, which is. All of the stormwater from traffic surfaces needs to be treated to remove suspended solids. And JDP has manufactured treatment devices that is independently certified. To provide water quality treatment. The applicant's proposal, instead of utilizing traditional inlets, which essentially just collects stormwater. Directs it into the detention system and then discharges it. Those are the typical inlets that you would see throughout town. What we're proposing is to utilize Stormscape, which is a manufactured treatment. System. And it's basically an inlet and a small bio retention system. Stormwater collected by the inlet flows through the bio retention system. The media that's used provides the filtration necessary to meet the eighty percent total suspended solids removal. However, in addition to that, those Stormscape systems utilize vegetation. Plants are planted within these inlets. So that not only do you get the suspended solids removal, but you also get vegetation update. Which treats stormwater for other pollutants that cannot be filtered out, um, any sort of dissolved. Metals, petroleum products. Some of the plants will remove those. So the end product of the stormwater runoff that's discharging from the site, it meets all of those requirements that the state has established that has been adopted by our science.
Eric, um, you you thought you've met with the the engineer for the condo association, correct?
Yes, yes, we have.
And he's reviewed your stormwater plan?
Correct.
And uh, has it met his approval?
It has. Um, the only. The one final product or piece of information that the association's engineer is looking for is soil conservation certification. And the plans have been submitted to Soil Conservation with a report. Um, I was hoping to have something by today from the district, but I think the district is a little busy right now. Um, but I've reviewed in concept the design with the district and I believe everything is acceptable to them. Hopefully, within another week or two, we should have the final certification from Soil Conservation. Once we have it, we'll certainly provide it to the board and then likewise to the association's engineer.
And so this will be an improvement over existing conditions?
Correct.
Okay, um, is there anything else about stormwater that you want to add at this time?
That's essentially the stormwater design for the project.
Okay. Um. Do we, are we confined with the RSIS standards, this project?
So the applicant does require a couple of waivers from RSIS. Um, primarily it deals with sidewalk and sidewalk installation. This type of development requires sidewalks to be constructed along both sides. Looking at this project, we've got essentially all of the homes that are located towards the back of the prod, towards the rear of the property, towards the end. What the applicant is providing are sidewalks along the front edge of where the homes are, and then the sidewalk will extend towards Route 12 to provide. Basically pedestrian traffic or pedestrian walkways all the way towards Route 12, where they can then, things can just walk along the existing sidewalks in that area. Part of why we decided not to provide sidewalks along both sides is. A lot of the changes that that's been happening in terms of stormwater management, one of the things. Or one of the aspects that everyone is looking to do is to break up. Impervious surfaces and also minimize impervious surfaces to the greatest extent possible. That's why a lot of times we're always looking for ways, we need to be working space and we. Utilize thirty or forty, well, that'd be adequate for the actual proposed needs. So typically, all of the regulations are trying to minimize the amount of impervious coverage. RSIS. In their notation and their standard detail for this type of development and this type of roadway. They require sidewalks to be provided on both sides. Essentially, if we were to provide sidewalks on both sides. It'll comply with our science, but also we're adding a lot of impervious surfaces and really not getting the benefit of it. Most of the occupants within this development, if they're walking within the development, they're. Ideally, those people are probably going to walk right across the road. If someone is living to the north of. The new roadway and they have a friend or. Someone else on the, within the building to the south, they're not going to walk all the way around along the sidewalk. They're going to walk right across the roadway. This is a detonator sack. It's going to be very limiting. There's going to be very, there's going to be a relatively small amount of traffic on this roadway. Essentially, the only book. The only visitors or users of this public roadways. Will be the occupants, whoever owns the property or who lives in the property. It is not connected to another roadway where there's going to be a significant amount of traffic. So we don't really feel it's necessary to have sidewalks going along the entire cul-de-sac. On both sides of the road, all the way out to Route 12. It's, it would comply with our science requirements. We could certainly do it, but. We're building, again, a lot of impervious surfaces, which basically produces more stormwater runoff, more pollutants. There's less groundwater recharge. It exacerbates an existing problem. And it doesn't really create a benefit that you would typically want or you would typically see when you have sidewalks on both sides.
Point of clarification, what you're describing is what's on the plans that are before the board or some deviation from the plans that are before the board?
That's what's out of plans. It doesn't document the waiver. So our science.
About your plans that I reviewed that are before the board have sidewalks on both sides of the road?
Yeah, it does, but not all the way out to Route 12. And then there's a section of sidewalk at the end of the cul-de-sac that we do not have.
Okay, so what you're describing on that exhibit is what's on the plan for the board?
Yes.
So the sidewalks are sufficient to allow. Finders more of the pedestrian needs of the state for the development at this time.
Correct.
And then access to Route 12 and to the. Varian store that amenities nearby. Um. Eric, in terms of variance, and you said that um, lots F was the only variant, at least of the these sites um. For the lots, but we're also seeking a variance for the retaining walls in terms of their height and their location, correct?
Correct.
And can you explain why uh, why we're not performing the order of retaining all of the bodies and locations and the problem of saying?
In order to develop. This property or any property to that. Typically, with the way the stormwater management rules are written now, we have to start with stormwater. Because that drives everything that we generally deal with development. This particular property, we have to discharge on grain because we don't have the ability to convey underground into the condominium association, into their system. So our stormwater, any stormwater is destroyed from this property has to essentially start at the terminal elevation that it's not like. And in addition to that. We also have to be able to collect the storm. We bind it to a certain detention system. And the way detention system works, you take a large volume of water, you put it into an area and you store it. And the way detention system works, you take a large volume of water, you put it into an area and you store it. And then you let it go at a much lower rate than what it came into that system. So in order to design this system, a normal development, be it townhouse, condominium, regular, single-family subdivisions, normally you would have a detention basin or a bio retention basin. And generally, those basins, as most of us, I'm sure, have seen, is usually a component of parts of it being excavated into the ground. And then sometimes there is going to be a small ground. And then there's a pipe that discharges the water from that structure. In our particular case, since we have to discharge on the ground at an increasing elevation, it's not possible to create a typical stormwater detention system. Any excavation automatically puts us below the elevation that we have to discharge. So the only way you can actually meet the stormwater management rules for this or the regulations for this project is we have to start creating storage above grade. Once we start creating that storage that's necessary above the ground, we then have to be able to get the water into that system because if the water bypasses that system, it's impossible to comply or to meet any of the stormwater regulations. So as we start to create mechanisms to direct stormwater where it needs to go, it drives and it forces us to start installing retaining walls along the property in order to start controlling certain areas so that we can direct the stormwater into this system. And it's the stormwater management rules that have basically driven the need for the retaining walls on this front. Because we've got to be able to control the runoff from the area that's being developed. We have to control the runoff from the roof. We have to control the runoff from the roads. We have to control the runoff from the lawn areas. And the only way to direct those waters, all of those various surface runoffs into an area that we can control is to create a detention system. And absent any retaining walls on this property, it's going to be impossible to control the stormwater runoff from the site. We do not have the ability to discharge at a lower elevation.
Hey, Erica, I just want to briefly go through the other variances according to the boss of the district's Tharco's memo and what they have. There's no rear alley access behind the townhome. Can you explain why that is?
Correct. So this particular development, the way it's been designed, all of the access to the zones, the individual unit, essentially will be from the public road. And the typical rear alley access that you would have if there's another abutting townhome on the other side. We don't really have that situation here. We've got two buildings to the north of us, one building to the south of us. Each of the units will have a limited amount of rear yard that they can utilize for outdoor activities. But the primary means of access to these zones will be from the public road that's being proposed.
And then finally, the residential buffer, this residential buffer that Mrs. Madison mentioned in her memo, can you explain why that's the basis for the variance for that and why that's not provided?
So the twenty-five-foot buffer is an area that's supposed to be landscaped and screened along the perimeter of the property, this property to separate the neighboring properties, both in the northeast and also to the south. What we have done, we have provided a limited amount of buffer. But again, the need to control stormwater runoff from this property starts to force where we can put certain amenities or certain improvements need to go. Additionally, what we're trying to do is to create some private rear yard space for all of the individual units so that the properties are not only a house, but you also have some usable outdoor space. And given the size of the property, the depth of the property, we've provided a little amount of buffering, certainly twenty-five feet, we're only able to provide both twenty-five feet. But we've provided a buffer along the entire perimeter of both the building stood in north and also the building to the south along the rear property line. But again, in order to direct the stormwater runoff where we needed to go and to try to provide some outdoor space for each of the individual units, we're unable to provide the full twenty-five feet.
Eric, you're aware that part of the property, a small part extends into Raritan Township. I don't know if you can show them on these. Why, I'm still a bit with the little seats, correct?
Correct.
And you've met with the engineer for Raritan? Okay, and your understanding that we'll have to apply for relief in Raritan Township? To get relief and flooding, then we'll have to get approvals from Raritan to the deed for the project?
Yes.
And while we're on the subject, I know in Mr. Clarico's memo, he wanted to know how your survey or establish the municipal boundary line. Can you discuss that a little bit?
Certainly. So the deeds for our property and even the neighboring properties, there are certain properties that it extends into the township. But there's no specific dimension that from the beginning of the property line, you go X number of feet to the borough line. It just gives us a finite dimension, which in some instances extends into the borough. We have completed survey work on Main Street, which is to the east of us, on the other side of Main Street. And likewise, to the west of this particular property, on the other side, to the west of the railroad tracks, we've also surveyed that property. And as part of the survey work that was done for those properties, the property to the to the west of the railroad, we have old plans that shows approximately where the borough line is. The plans for that or the survey for that property and even the deeds for that property, it doesn't give us any finite dimension as to where the borough line is. It just shows an approximate location of where the borough line is. So what we have done is to essentially merge this survey work with the survey that we've done beyond the limits of this property and then projected through where we believe the borough line is.
I'm gonna start, I was looking at various parts of Mr. Clarico's letter that I noted that we ought to address. In in one point seven, Mr. Clarico mentions a phase one environmental assessment. Is that something that we're going to provide?
Yes, we're going.
Excuse me, that was, that was one point seven?
Yeah, one point seven, I think, letter. In two point one, so I have some Clarico's letter, I believe Chad Headshots at the HOA will manage the stormwater. Okay, so you draft the associate manual.
Yes.
This will be recorded at the appropriate time on delineating the inherent responsibilities that that's that, right?
Correct.
There's in number two point two point one of Mr. Clarico's letter, he mentioned decent heights on the neighboring property for ingress and egress and is it your understanding that I took a little bit of setting to vacate those rights and you'll add a note regarding the use of the plans, correct?
Correct.
And you'll also get a note to the plans regarding the borough of Flemington sewer easement? Which is on the
Yes.
document, okay. And your understanding of that is that the borough has a right to lay sewer ingress and egress and maintenance rights?
Correct.
In two point two point three, Mr. Clarico reviews various issues of the stormwater plan. I think there was a suggestion about adding a swale to the property. And can you address that?
So Mr. Clarico's recommended that swales, the applicant should construct swales along the base of the retaining wall. That would separate, that's the area separating the properties. The existing properties that front on Route 12, and those are the areas to the north of us, and then high one, the areas to the east of us. Mr. Clarico wanted swales designed and constructed. Typical swales, normally when they're built, it's an excavated channel. Sometimes they're formed by burming, creating worms on the low side while you excavate or cut in certain aspects. This particular property, the issue that we run into with this site, all of the offsite stormwater is flowing into the property and through the property. But there's such a limited relief, approximately two feet from the north property line to where the stormwater leaves the property at the south and then goes into the condominium association. If we were to start excavating to create a swale along the base of the retaining wall, there's not enough grade change from the north property line to the south where the stormwater ultimately has to flow in order to create those traditional swales. What we have done in grading the site and building the retaining walls is essentially the stormwater is going to flow towards retaining wall and then ultimately flow along the retaining wall towards the collection points that we've provided, the two, the head wall and then along the north retaining wall and then the flat end section along the easterly retaining wall. Stormwater will flow along the walls and along the base of the wall and then ultimately gets picked up and collected by those pipes and then discharged into or through the property towards the association.
Please point your clarification. The water you're talking about flowing along the walls, it's flowing on your property or on the neighbor's property?
On our property.
It's flowing on your property?
Yes.
Including the wall on the east side of the property?
Yes.
I'm just suggesting for a French.
One option that we have talked about with the applicant is to minimize any potential of having ponding water or essentially water sitting in that area. Because the area is very irregular. It's not very steep. And again, constructing a typical conveyance, a typical grass channel, the property does not have enough relief, which would allow us to do that. What we're proposing to do is along the base of the retaining wall, essentially is to construct an infiltration trench. I've used it in the past on other projects. And what an infiltration trench essentially is, it's a stone trench that's built in an area where if you're trying to remove surface water and try to provide a mechanism for it to get kind of incidented ground, utilizing a stone trench along the base of the retaining wall will allow surface water not only to flow along the surface, but any potential areas where it may pond, the water can infiltrate into that trench. Stone trenches are typically a couple of feet deep. They could be about two feet deep, little bit less, little bit more. And essentially, there's about six to eight, which is a topsoil above the stone that gets planted. So when all of the construction work is done, you'll never know that there's a stone trench. However, in addition to that stone trench, the pipes are a conveyance pipe that is, that will pick up or collect the water and discharge it through the property. We'll continue the backfill of those pipes in lieu of using DGA, which is dense graded aggregate, which is basically a crushed stone aggregate material that has a lot of finds and remixes with it. We'll revise our detail and design so that we would utilize clean stone as part of that pipe jack bill. So not only will the water flow, any potential surface water that gets into that trench, not only will it flow through the stone, but it will also flow along the pipe. And by doing that, it'll minimize the possibility of having any ponding on the neighboring properties as a result of stormwater flowing in this area.
Turning to section two point two point five of Mr. Clarico's memo, he says that property fronts on Parker Ave and wants clarification, who has rights with respect to Parker Ave, whether it's Borough, NJDOT, now you've you've met with NJDOT, is that correct?
I've reviewed the project in concept with DOT. We have not officially met as of right now. However, in terms of the actual right of way of Parker Avenue, the deeds for the property, this property and your jointed properties, it makes references to Parker Avenue. The tax map for the borough doesn't identify where Parkin Avenue was. The current tax map, the way it shows the right of way for Route 12 matches all of the these plots that we have for the property. So at some point, where Parker Avenue might have existed, there are some indications back deeds that Parker Avenue was vacated either in the thirties or forties. We have some additional deed work that I could certainly plot and provide to Mr. Clarico. Thank you.
Main Street, history, and there was a
And so it's Madam Mayor certainly has more information than I do in terms of the history. The deed calls for Parker Avenue, but one of the documentation we have doesn't really indicate where Parker Avenue is. Even some of the older deeds make reference to Parker Avenue. And again, we do have some information that Parker Avenue did exist and was vacated when the circle and Route 12 was built. So we will certainly provide the additional information, but right now, there is technically no Parker Avenue. It's, all of it is the right of way for Route 12.
It's incorporated in the DOT right of way?
Yes.
When you say it was named that would typically mean vacant rights would go to some entity, you're saying the entity was DOT?
I believe that's the way the deed reads, that when the borough vacated the right of way, it basically went for the work that was done for Route 12.
That's essentially what your plan is representing?
Yes.
So when Route 12 was, so there was a Parker Avenue when the state built Route 12, named Route 12 because it's twelve miles long, which is a fantastic. Parker Avenue was basically deemed Route 12, but under the Board of Elections, Parker Avenue exists for the voters on Parker Avenue. So the residents that live on Route 12 do have addresses listed as Parker Avenue around in Route 12. Prior to the circle, Parker Avenue went a little ways down, what is now a little Main Street did not have a north and a south side. It was Main Street. Circle didn't exist and subdivided the street. Rainbow Avenue, Ward Avenue. There you go. Any addresses of these properties are correct? Yes, they could retain and circle in.
I think they moved, I think they ended up calling it Parker Avenue. Before they put the circle in, my neighbor, Mrs. Ross, on the left side of me, to her house was moved from Brown Street to where she is by me on Route 12. And I think that's when they did the circle. They knew there were houses there and they just couldn't have it where it just went into one big thing. So they kept this park. I never knew it was parked until I knew there. You take a part of that too, maybe. We can't really make any sense. Only thank you. Looking forward to that history.
And so on that note, as they may suggest, we usually break at nine. I was trying to gauge where the testimony was going. Would we break now and come back to your testimony? Because I think we're still moving along with a lot of the questions from the court. Is that correct?
Correct.
And I was thinking we'd finish your testimony and then have a break and go on to Bob's comments, but I think we're going to need to break because we usually break that. So if everybody's in agreement, we break in five minutes. So we'll say come back then.
Nine, twelve, what's that?
Say we'll try and end for nine twelve and we'll restart.
No, I have a used pedal in my leg. Mayor Darrell, I'm here. Has woman in the saddle?
Yes.
Mr. Hamby?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Giffen?
Yeah.
Mr. Hill?
Yeah.
Ms. White Smithy?
Here.
Mr. Savino?
Ms. Swingle?
Here.
Mr. Mario?
Here.
Ms. Kaczynski?
Mr. Clarico?
Yeah.
Ms. McManus?
And Mr. Travers?
Here.
Here.
Just before we mean stop, I have a minute. Could you mind giving me a thirty second? When Mr. Josh LaForte accused himself, we didn't actually answer everybody else. Do you think we should? I just want to make sure.
We should do that, yes. We have made a practice of asking everyone on the board, for new board members, what we typically do is we ask everyone if they have any conflict, whether it be a personal or financial, direct or indirect interest with regard to the applicant, with regard to the project. And we do that because conflict of interest issues can arise at certain points in time. We typically ask that in the beginning of each application. I did forget to do that tonight, so I'm glad that you reminded me that we'll do that. And I just want to point out, if anyone ever thinks that they may have any or has any questions, just say exactly what that is. You let me know. We can talk through it. You let me know, we can talk through it. Um but is there anyone, you know, at this point, that feels that they have any potential um conflict of interest with regard to this applicant, this application? Speaking our proper.
And nobody's within issue.
Yeah, we look at it, we'll notice that.
I was trying to go in the last, but I'm like, I think we're good. Okay, thank you for uh giving us that time, counsel. All right, everybody, let's start continuing with this person's testimony, please. Give him his testimony.
Thank you. Um Eric, I want to just clarify um from your testimony that you just gave us. The road, just somebody in the development is going to be a private road, correct?
Correct, okay.
Now, Mr. Clarko's report moving on, uh which is identified as PB four, that's the report of January seventeenth, twenty twenty four, of the updated from September. I'm I'm now on number two point two point six. There was a discussion about whether the neighboring property had an easement over Lot 12, and we have, we've done a, there's been a title report and there's no evidence of reported easements, correct?
Correct, there's no easement building in our title history for our proxy.
Turning to page eight of uh PB dash four um will comply with the requirements to get lot and lot numbers and manage some property, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and um the Mr. Clarko also asked for details about the access onto Route 12 from NJ DOT as well as permit plans, can you comment on that?
So the proposed roadway will access NJ DOT or New Jersey State Highway Route 12. Um part of our project is going to require permits from DOT to be issued for construction of the new roadway. DOT has as part of their requirements, how their plan sets and so forth have to be prepared. We have started preliminary preliminary process and discussions with DOT. As of right now, I'm trying to set up the application meeting to go over what the doc and what they're gonna ask of us in terms of plans and reports and any additional information that they may want in order for us to file a permit application for construction of the new intersection. Um certainly, once those plans are prepared, I will definitely provide Bob with copies of all of the documentation.
Just for the record, any access from the take would be subject to the applicant, any and all outside agency agreements, including DOT or D E or the other agency jurisdiction over the application. What we're trying to ascertain as far as we normally is that we're not proposing something that's inconsistent with what an agency might require, because that would then result in the board approval subject to a condition that would then force them to come back here to seek an amendment to improve.
Thanks for the question.
And I would also be interested in seeing those plans.
Absolutely.
Right, um.
You don't mind, one quick question, so be interested. You said, even though there's physically access ability between Lot thirteen and your lot out front, the driveways are interconnected. There's no legal, the owner of the adjoining Lot thirteen has no legal access rights to this property.
Correct, there's nothing.
That's your testimony?
Yes, there's nothing in our title that indicates there's an easement benefiting Lot fifteen.
Okay.
Eric, turning to um PB four, that's Mr. Clarko's letter of January seventeen on three point three point two. He says um that the proposed sidewalk along the private access road has not been widened to a width of five feet and two hundred foot in triples, can you comment on that?
So certainly, we can provide the additional five foot passing area, I believe is how the uh it's termed now, along the sidewalk. Part of any future plan revisions, we will incorporate the five foot areas that are necessary.
And we'll also provide ADA ramp details, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um.
Another question. I don't want to interrupt. You don't mind, since something's going on. Will that include ADA accessible crosswalks? If you're not providing sidewalk around the whole property, you'd be proposing a uh ADA defined crosswalks of the the houses on the south side and access sidewalk on the west side?
Uh we can certainly provide a crosswalk um essentially where the parking lot, the smaller parking lot is, I think might be the most appropriate location.
Eric, I'm turning to page, the end of page eight, beginning of page nine of PB four, Mr. Clarko's uh I'm in three point three point four, talks about uh how the sidewalk was shifted uh to some degree, I guess with the stormwater uh uh changes and that uh part of the sidewalk is outside the right of way and goes into some of the lots. Uh we're going to revise the plans to show up, the easement, it'll accommodate those in front transport to the HOA?
Correct.
Okay, and that doesn't present any issues, correct?
No.
Um.
Want a clarification? Why you have a one two foot wide driveway? In those areas where you're shifting the sidewalk outside the right, you still have a one two foot wide driveway? Are you keeping a long driveway?
Yes, from the garage door to the back of the sidewalk, it's about eighteen feet two inches. So we'll demonstrate positive.
Okay, so uh and while we're on the subject of the driveway, um we're providing sufficient parking to this facility, correct?
Correct.
Spaces are we providing?
So we see townhomes, so in its design, each unit has a garage plus a driveway, so each unit essentially will have two parks to exist. Additionally, we're providing small parking lot, which is towards the southeast, west, east corner of the property, there's a small parking area there that has eleven parking spaces, three of which we're proposing to be EV ready spaces. So the project essentially is providing for the eighteen townhomes, thirty six parking spaces, plus a small parking area. Now, um also, one of the, I think Thomas is looking up about like we have a lot of words in terms of the number of EV parking spaces that are required. Um within the parking area, that small parking lot, we're providing three EV parking spaces. However, the way we anticipate this project functioning, because they're individual townhouse units, each with their own private garage and their driveways, that with most of the EVs on the market right now, there's typically a home charger that goes along with them, that most people either have in their garage or it's attached to the outside of their houses that they can utilize to charge their cars overnight from their park or during the day. So the way we anticipate this working is that any of the homeowners who would have any electric car, that if they wanted, in lieu of having to park in that parking lot to charge the car, they would essentially park in their own, on their own private property. Where they would then park the car. So in lieu of fifteen percent over the forty, I believe it's forty three parking spaces, in lieu of fifteen percent multiplied by the total number of parking that's required for the project, essentially, we would have the three EV parking spaces within the parking lot for any visitors. And any one of the residents who has or who would happen, electric car or truck, they would have their own private home charger that they can utilize.
In other words, uh the people who live in the townhouses will have parking in their garage and on their driveway. And if somebody wants to buy an electric vehicle, it would be relatively, you know, easy for them to provide a charger in their own law. It's ideal, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And um you say forty three spaces are required for this project and we're dividing forty eight, correct?
I think it's forty eight. I just counted twelve on your, in the parking, plus the third, so.
Thank you, Jay.
And uh do you foresee any issues with vehicles turning around on this property?
No, at the end of, at the end of the private roadway, we're providing a cul-de-sac ball, essentially, um. One comment that the fire department had is that they needed a larger turning rate, because their largest apparatus requires eighty four feet. RSIS only requires an eighty foot paved ball at the end of a cul-de-sac. We've increased that to eighty four feet to satisfy the fire department, which exceeds RSIS requirement. So I don't anticipate there being an issue with anyone turning around on this property or any trucks. Um within the parking lot, the little parking lot that we have, it's the aisle, instead of being twenty four feet wide, the aisle is going to be twenty seven feet wide. Also, all of the parking spaces are, you're coming down the road, even if you're attempting to turn into that parking area, all of the parking spaces are going to be visible in the event that they're all occupied, you can continue down the roadway. Additionally, if you inadvertently turn into the parking area and every one of the spaces occupied, the handicap parking space is non-accessible, meaning that the actual striped island adjacent to that parking space has to be at least eighteen feet wide. So if someone needed to utilize or to turn around within the parking area, they would have the option essentially of pulling into that striped parking area, because nothing is allowed to occupy that area. And use that as a turner activity, where they can then exit the parking lot.
If you wanna show on the plan, we're not the same.
Essentially, this this is the striped parking area that's adjacent to the handicap parking.
And um the HOA would be enforcing parking restrictions, correct?
Correct.
Um and and you reviewed the letter from the fire marshal, correct? Yes, I believe there's a most recent letter that who wrote was dated June twenty third, twenty twenty three, correct?
Correct.
And did you have any issues with that letter or are you able to comply?
I believe we have, as part of the plan revisions, there are several notes that's been added to, added to the drawings to address the comments. Uh the only design requirement was the larger turning radius at the end of the cul-de-sac.
Which we provided now.
Correct.
Um. Is there anything else about parking that you wanna mention or that you think is important to mention at this point?
No, I think in terms of the parking, we're certainly providing more than the minimum that's required by RSIS for this project.
In terms of uh, I'm gonna turn to page ten of Mr. Clarko's uh letter of January seventeen. Uh number four, talk about site grading, is comment four, and goes into that, it varies step. Um do you have any comments? I know you've already addressed site grading to some extent, do you have anything that you wanna add to address those comments?
No, I think in terms of the grading, if there's any ability to modify and to further try to address some Bob's comments, I think we may have the ability to tweak the site design a little to provide greater separation from the property line to the retaining wall, but I do believe the way the site has to function, given the stormwater requirements for this project, we have to utilize the retaining wall. Uh typical swale constructions are just not practical to this project, because it puts the bottom of the swale at a lower elevation than the pipe that is charged for.
And Eric, while we're back to the subject of stormwater, uh you you modified your report to satisfy some of the requests of the engineer who was representing the condo board, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and so, and you're going to provide uh that report with those modifications to Mr. Clarko, correct?
Correct.
For the record, he's been provided to the board.
To the board, okay.
This is gonna be part of the public record.
Okay, we're gonna provide that to the board, it's updated, and how is it different from what was provided?
So the actual with the board or the design of the system didn't change, but the way that the association's engineer wanted the analysis for the offside area to be completed differs from the way it was presented to the report that the board has on file. So the the conclusion remains the same, we meet all of the reproduction requirements, both for the onsite and when you account for the offside area, we're meeting all of the performance requirements. It's just how we get there is slightly different in terms of how he wanted the numbers computed and then added.
Just for the board identification, under the, under the stormwater regulations, state regulations at the borough, it requires to to adopt and to enforce it. We have to make a finding uh that, in fact, what they're proposing is fully compliant with the stormwater design criteria, all the, all the various categories and criteria they need to meet. We have no provision in our ordinance to allow for any deviations or to be a specific finding that they met, they dotted every high, crossed every T, and they met every digit for standard, which a lot of the comments in here, if they, they either comply with or they haven't yet provided. What the engineers are indicating is that they made other modifications to the design yet seen yet to address concerns the adjoining property on that. Uh but again, the jurisdiction and the uh, the the body that has to reach that conclusion is the, is the funny.
And Eric, in in your opinion, it's an improvement of what we're to think. This is correct?
Correct. Um again, the way the stormwater management rules are written, the applicant is required to reduce the rate of runoff from his development to below what the first currently. So part of that reduction requirement is for the two year storm, we have to reduce that rate by fifty percent as compared to the existing conditions, we're meeting that again. For the ten year storm, we have to reduce it by twenty five percent for the area that's being developed. The applicant is in, it's meeting that criteria. For the hundred year storm, we have to reduce it by twenty percent, and again, we're meeting that criteria.
Right, um going back to uh PB four, that's Mr. Clarko's January seventeenth letter um four point three discusses various, discusses earthwork, you see that on page twelve?
Yes.
Are you able to comply with uh all of the comments in four point three?
Correct, we will certainly know it on the plans and the revision that a juror technical engineer um would be retained to supervise and to oversee and approve all of the areas of fill on the property.
I think we've already discussed stormwater management, so let's go on to page sixteen, Mr. Clarko's, the letter of January seventeen, that's PB four. Um number six talks about utilities, sanitary sewer. Did you receive a copy of the letter from the Sewer Department October thirty first?
So we do have some college from the Sewer Department, yes.
It was sent to the board by the engineers. That was the borough engineers? Yeah, we received a letter, uh we were copied on it, it was addressed to the planning board, and it was from um Remington and Burnet Engineers, stated October thirty first, twenty twenty three. Um Kristen Kramer.
I actually have that. I have that marked as uh PB six. Uh seven, PB seven, with the fire marshals, June twenty third, twenty twenty three, laws of PB six, those would be pretty.
Okay, so um.
That would be the letter, page of October thirty first, twenty twenty three.
Do you want to give it a copy in the, or do you, you know, why don't you give it to her? Okay. Eric, you can start telling them. Okay, so um Eric, um you've been in communications with the uh the Sewer Department, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and uh can you address how sewers are gonna be handled on this? So pipe?
Presently, along the south of existing Lot eleven, which is a lot that fronts on East Wall, towards the back of that property, there's a sewer main. Our current proposal is to connect our proposed sewer main extension through this property into that main. However, I do believe, based on some deed information and even comments from the sewer engineer, that we may be able to connect. There is, so where's the west of the property, on one of these joining lots? There's a part of the borough sewer network, there's an existing sewer main that's There's an existing sewer main that's located on that property and it's actually shown on this plan. There's an existing manhole that we have to figure out, which we have not yet been able to do, whether or not there's an actual easement that would allow us to tie into that main. That's one of the recommendations that the borough sewer department has is to try to connect into that system. If there is an easement that will allow us to connect into that system, then we'll revise our sewer design in lieu of connecting in the main that's located towards the rear of the properties on Route twelve, we would connect into that sewer system that's located to the west of us.
I don't see just for the right, maybe just summarize what the engineer is saying. They're asking you to do an off off your property replacement of the existing sewer line down to that manhole at the back of the car wash?
No, so the existing sewer line that's located basically behind the car wash and along the rear of our property. That sewer main is encased in concrete and it's fairly deep. It's probably about fifteen feet deep, based on my conversations with the sewer department. We have been believed to connect into that main. It's within an easement. It runs through our property. We do not need to secure rights from any of us in order to tie into that. So our current proposal is to connect into that main. However, towards the west of us, part of the borough's sewer system, sorry Bob, towards the east. Got to keep my pointing north, left or right. But towards the east of us, part of it's there's an existing sewer system that's located on the adjoining property. It's part of the borough's sewer network. What I've got deeds, but I haven't been able to figure out whether or not there's an actual easement there that would allow us to tie into it. The sewer system is part of the borough's network. It's clearly part of the borough's system. The the borough's recommendation via the sewer department is to try to tie into that system in lieu of the system that currently is located along the rear of the car wash from the wrong power property. If we have the ability to tie into that via existing rights, then we will revise our design to connect into that system. Because it's a better connection for us because it's not steep number one and number two. It's not encased in concrete. So it makes the process simpler for us and also make it simple for the developer and also for the borough to maintain. So that's part of the revision that we will have to or the investigation that we need to do in the revival plans.
The sewer department indicated there's enough capacity for this, correct?
Correct. We've reviewed both the water and sewer capacity with the borough and adequate capacity exists for both.
And that same, you've been in touch with the, you discussed water, correct? Provision of water?
In terms of capacity, yes. We have discussed the ability to provide water to the property and the borough has adequate capacity to serve the site.
And do you foresee any problems with connecting the water main and any issues raised by the by the borough in that capacity?
I we've got capacity, so we clearly can tie in and we have capacity on the water main extends or exists within Route twelve. Our proposal is to connect into the water main within Route twelve, loop it through the property and then connect the water main. The end of that loop will connect in towards Main Street. There's an existing ingress and egress easement that benefits this property on the adjoining property to the south of us. Our plan is to utilize that easement for extension of the water main into Main Street. And that'll create a loop system, which in the event that there's a breakage or damage along any of the water main that the borough may have to service if they need to shut water service off to some of the properties that it doesn't isolate all of these AP homes.
Access by easement, conveyment of utility rights for installation of utilities?
It's specifically those ingress egress. We're investigating whether or not we need to secure it. Correct. We're investigating whether or not we have the ability to install utilities within that as part of the ingress egress.
And if it doesn't, you're going to have to acquire those rights?
Correct.
Eric, do you have a fire official? Bob had hit on page seventeen, six point two point four of his January seventeenth letter. Said you're going to need approval from the fire official regarding fire hydrants and water supply. Do you foresee any issues with that or is there sufficient, in your opinion, water to address the fire hydrants?
No. I believe we're fine in terms of the location of the hydrants and so forth. Well, certainly we submit the plans to the fire marshal and ask for his input. But in terms of providing adequate firefighting, fire hydrants, I believe we can certainly accommodate any of the fire department needs.
Have you asked a case that part of this rural system has required the flow and pressure for these type of building units that would be otherwise required under our size?
No, we have not at this point.
Turning again to Mr. Clarco's January seventeenth letter, gas and electric, six point three. Do you foresee any issues with gas and electric? Have you described how that's going to be addressed on your site plan?
Certainly. So I do not anticipate any issues with gas and electric. Generally, those service lines are relatively shallow. Electric service will be brought in on the ground to serve the new residences. Obviously, gas is completely on the ground. Those lines are typically about twenty-four inches from the surface, give or take. And because they don't depend on gravity for flow, they can meander and move in and out, up and down and sideways as necessary to avoid any of the strong drainage infrastructure. And likewise, any of the sanitary sewer infrastructure, which depends on slope because they have the low via gravity. Those other utilities could be worked around any of the gravity designed utility systems.
And can you describe the landscaping that you're providing? And there just that that's part of the site plan that was a bit incorrect?
Correct. That that sheet number nineteen of the set that the board has on file. And what this plan shows is the proposed landscaping that you have is would like to destruct as part of this development. Along the private road, we have street trees. Along with both of the northern property line, the southern property line, alongside that east of the property lines, we're providing trees and shrubs to provide some screening from this development from the adjoining properties. Along the foundation and in front of the new homes, we're also providing trees and shrubs to soften the foundation. So that once you have the building, we don't have these long walls or bare walls. We're providing low growing shrubs along the foundation to try to break up that mass so that the project is more visually appealing.
Is there any issues with the location of the street trees in terms of electric service or over the line or I guess you've got moved shit completely up.
Correct. We removed the planting so that they don't conflict with any utilities. If there's additional changes on plan provisions, this will be necessary to complete this project. We'll certainly continue to modify any of those locations as necessary to avoid any utility conflict.
And you also described how the applicant is proposing to light the property?
So what we're proposing are along the private roadway and then likewise within the parking area, we're providing individual light stations. And I do not have a mounted copy of that of the lighting plan, but there is a lighting plan that included in the plan set of the white house. And the final sheet in the set is sheet number sheet number twenty. And what we're proposing in terms of site lighting are individual light stations mounted along the private roadway. The stations are going to be fifty feet high measured from finish grade to the top of the light fixture. And all of these lights fixtures are basically fully shielded lights. And they're also fully full cut-off fixtures. The full cut-off fixtures, what those lights are, they are essentially the more modern light fixtures that when you look at the light, you do not see the light source. You see the light emanating from the fixture, but you do not see the bulb. Also, those fixtures typically when you're looking at them from a distance, normally is the plain which is that the light emanates from, which is the bottom of the fixture. You do not see any light spillage of that. Those are the full the full cut-off light fixtures. Those are the ones that we're proposing. Likewise, with the lights along the roadway itself, we're going to utilize shielded fixtures so that any of the normal backlighting that you would have, since this is a residential development, we do not want to have the light spill back onto the dwellings. So we're going to shield those lights so that it lights the road and it lights the sidewalk. But there's not too much light spillage towards the dwelling.
And we received comments from the environmental permission. All right, and we've addressed the plantings, correct? We planted trees where possible and
Correct.
In terms of the the impact, the visual impact of the retaining walls, can you address that?
What we're planning to utilize and the applicant is not designing retaining walls, retaining walls yet. However, what we have discussed instead of using missionary blocks or reinforced poured concrete retaining walls, our plan is to utilize either E P Henry type retaining wall blocks, which are the more decorative blocks that you would typically see in a residential property. Either E P Henry or similar manufacturers, Diamond Pro is another one, Cambridge also makes retaining wall blocks. And those generally, what I typically term segmented block retaining wall structures, they're ideally suited for this property because it's residential development, the actual visual side of the wall, which is going to be noticeable by the neighbors, the retaining wall to not to be visible from the or from the owners of any of the residences. Those retaining walls, the way they're typically designed is that all of the reinforcement that's necessary will extend towards and into our property. It doesn't extend on to the neighboring property. And also the actual face of the wall, the more decorative part of the wall is what the neighboring property owners are going to see when they look at this when they look at the walls when they're completed.
Do you have any other comments on the Mr. Clarco's letter that should be addressed at this point?
No.
Any comments with respect to the planning report or do we, I think we've not that this has been addressed and we can have our planner address various other issues, you said that traffic is going to be handled, correct?
Right. All function recyclables will be kept inside indoors within the units.
And mail would be addressed presumably in communications with the post office about hardly one hundred.
Correct.
Okay. Can we talk about the outdoor areas on the site a little bit?
So the only outdoor areas that we have on the property on this particular project is the common parking area, that small parking lot. And the other outdoor areas are the raryards of the individual units. We anticipate the raryards, they're going to be private each one of these units. So if someone wants to put patio furniture or something of that sort at the back of the individual units, they can certainly do so. We're not proposing, as you would typically perhaps having a larger development, common open space where you would have, I guess, play areas. The applicant is not proposing any of that type of facility for this project.
I have no further questions. Okay.
It's all you.
That's all you test them. So we're open for questions, am I right? So, okay, so we usually ask professionals first and I think professionals, do you mind if I did try to Bob going first on this one? I think he's got most of the questions.
There's there's a lot here. A lot of the responses we heard to this stuff were indicating is the revised plan doesn't address the issue. They're indicating they're going to submit something to address the issue. So there's a lot of, I'll call it undotted eyes and across these here. Some of the things that I heard that were, I think somewhere more along policy line, we had asked that the, as part of this application, that they they establish definitively the municipal line in this area for the specific reason that they're putting infrastructure and buildings, one of the buildings, one that actually they're indicating is that I'm foot over the line. So it has to be a clear distinction of jurisdiction in this area. My recollection, and I don't, when they came back with the revised plan showing the beats and bounds, you know, depiction of the line, I thought that was definitive. But what I'm hearing here that it's somewhat proximate based on some other adjoining property references that don't specifically have the municipal line. My recollection of the municipal line, the borough was established through a legislative process that established the beats and bounds boundary of the property and is actually mine mended in certain areas. What I was expecting is that somebody to certify, if I if found those mining locations, they tied in and this is a definitive representation of that line. You know, based on whatever, you know, documentation that they they were able to ascertain and feel. In many applications, the line is out in the middle of nowhere and if it's off six inches or eight inches, it really doesn't make a whole lot of difference. But when you're wedging buildings and everything in, you know, right to you, you can basically go and get your cabinets here. You know, you you know, you can't have rough framing dimensions and stuff, so. You know, I think I think that has to be clear from this representation and what they're representing to us was in fact something that surveyors take the responsibility for. They say he's tied into that point and this is an accurate representation. It could very well be exactly what they're showing us. But we need, you know, we need that kind of assertion. There's a lot of open and what I've come to find out tonight is that there's been several revisions of the stormwater report since the report that was submitted to the borough and we review that what I call created five or six revisions through the, I have no idea what they, you know, what they show or what they did or whatever, but obviously that information has to be presented, you know, to the board. The representation here is none of that, it's a print, right? None of that altered the designs on these plans before the board.
Correct. The size of the detention system stayed the same.
Inverts, pipes, everything else. It was, okay. So but we still have to see that because a lot of what we had in our report is documenting elements of the stormwater thing that have not been addressed. We also pointed out a few aspects of the design as it was presented that was not compliant with RSIS, with the state stormwater criteria. And not that it makes any difference, but just for the record, we didn't make any other report. What I reported earlier on that the borough has to update their stormwater ordinance based on the July seventeenth or whatever revision the state did, amendment to the stormwater rules that the state did. This application was filed the week before. It was deemed complete a week before. So they are not subject, they're subject to the state's stormwater regulations, but not hold otherwise considered current regulation, which has the enhanced rainfall events and it's just the current enhanced rainfall events to go fifty years out, rainfall event. So nothing, nothing wrong with what they're doing. But just I just noted that for the record, it's, you know, they they are, I don't know what they got under wire. They they met, they met, you know, they they were ahead of the deadline, so they're not subject to those regulations. But at the end of the year, if they testify, this is an extremely challenging subject for all the reasons that he mentioned as part of this test one. Um, for all the reasons that he mentioned as part of this testimony. One, and he described it rather accurately. What's, what's transpiring here is that. You have a broad base of adjoining properties to the north and to the east. That flow overland and very flat smokes into this property. There's actually a wetland area on this property which. Going to be testified to. You're going to get a permit, a qualified permit to fill that wetland area in. You qualify as a general permit.
Correct. So, we have filed for an LOI for the wetlands that show on the property. D P has completed their site visit. They emailed, I think it's a couple of weeks ago, a sketch where they want the expanded, the, the wetland expanded slightly. Um. It's still, the expansion is probably going to double the area of wetlands that were shown on the property. It kind of. Doesn't fatten out in all direction. It just extends a little bit further to the north. But the aggregate area of wetland is still going to be significantly under half of an acre, so it qualifies for a GP six, which will allow us to fill the wetland.
Very important piece of information. It's not indirect. Um, that we were reviewing this on some of the rest, and again, just taking this reputation that they still qualify for that. Again, this information that we don't have in front of us. So I think that needs, you know, that needs to be documented on the wing. The biggest challenge here, uh, is the fact that they have. Again, they're, as he indicated, they're putting fill on this site. They're basically building a barrier. That would otherwise prevent what naturally occurs, which is water flowing through the site. And what we had recommended previously and what they did in part. Was to not put fill up to the property line, not put retaining walls up to the property line. But to pull them back in so they would have the ability to put interceptor swales on their property. They have no ability to go onto the neighbor's property unless they acquire grading rights or easement rights or something, and they've not proposed doing it. So they have told the stuff that they pulled the walls in, but they've not taken advantage of that. By putting swales in those areas that we can then indicate where they adequately convey. You know, water down to these low points where they're having, as he described, a piping system that's going to convey that water through the site. In order to convey the water to the site, you got to get the water to those low point headwaters. Uh, and that just pointed out to me is during the break. That area that they're pulling the wall back and remounting that swell is actually going to be a last day plant to it, which is going to preclude playing swell. So it's going to have to be a lot of modifications of the plan in order to ensure that it works. And, and it's going to be very difficult. But the fact that it's difficult and a challenge doesn't mean they, you know, we have to re-waiver. Or give relief to things that we know are going, at the end, we're going to have water standing in these areas and we're going to have complaints from property areas about mosquitoes or whatever else. Uh, I said, they told everything here from the property line. With the exception of the wall along the end of the, uh, where the cul-de-sac meets the property on the east side of the property. And if you look at the grades, again, something we have to work through. If you look at the existing grades in the area, it's dead flat. So any, and obviously anything in that particular area, you build a wall, something is dead flat and creating a dam. Uh, it's going to, it's going to pound water, it's going to, you know, it's, it's just, there's a lot of little details that are not insignificant. That are going to have to be addressed. Um, you know, the underground so, the area is very intricate, um. And then very, particularly when designing this thing because it is. You look at this thing, it's sometimes referred to as a playground greeting, you know, in the background with all typing and stuff. Um, so we asked for details of that because there's a lot of. Pipes that are crossing over and you see a lot of, a lot of infrastructure here that has to be very precise. And, you know, the stormwater pipe that goes in has to meet a certain grade. It can't be six inches off. Six inches off, the whole system doesn't. So, uh, you're going to be in the need for, you know, a lot of new ones in detail. Um, we heard the request with the waiver of the, uh. Uh, it's not meaning RSIS standards for the sidewalk. They're basically putting sidewalk in front of the units. And then on the one side of the road after Route twelve. Um, again, any action you take out of Route twelve is. The access out to Route twelve is going to be subject to DOT. But knowing what DOT has jurisdiction going back to the Park River Avenue thing. My presumption or wrong is represented here that. That was that right away, as such as it may fit, was absorbed into the DOT jurisdiction. Uh, when they acquired or built Route twelve. Uh, we obviously need to know that from the DOT because they're putting a good chunk of their. Access roads. Again, nothing wrong with that. We just need to know that when they get their permit from DOT that that DOT has that. Is assuming that jurisdiction is approving that as part of whatever permits, uh, that DOT may have issued. The revised plans did address some of the issues we raised in our original report, which I forget what that was back in September, I think. Um, so, you know, as I went to this report, I basically repeated all the comments from the original report. And I supplemented it with items that either anything was not addressed, partially addressed, or in a few instances wasn't. And I pointed out the elements of how that, you know, how that was accomplished. Um.
And Bob, for a point of order on that, can I ask you, um. How do you feel that your report, you feel the testimony given has adequately answered your queries in the reports, the things that you said? Previously said were not addressed. Have they been addressed in this testimony or do we need?
A lot of the testimony was in, they're two, they are intending to address it. The, the, the challenge the board has, and it's somewhat of a dilemma, is that. You need to have documentation in front of you where you can reach a finding about. That in fact, they have met the standard, they've met an RSIS standard, that they met the stormwater standard, that you have to have those findings. You really shouldn't, might be, you really can't. You really shouldn't be acting on a condition that they should come up with some plan that does address it. Because again, you're part, it's part of the public process. Documentation has to be in the public domain. Has to be subject to our review and has to be subject to questions from the, you know, from the, from residents or whatever. And it's, it's a good thing that they met with the adjoining neighbors and they reached some sort of conclusion in there. Subject to a lot of conditions apparently. But we have to, the jurisdiction for approving it lies with this board. And then whatever that final plan ends up to be, if there's modification, if there's other entities that have an interest, then obviously they join. Um, condo association, Raring has an interest here. They're going to look at that final version to see if they can prove that. Again, they have a different interest in this. And then ultimately, any. Who you might grant is going to be subject to rather than individuals approval because there's going to be inevitably. Some element of improvements that are going to be in rather than actions, being piping, grading, whatever, part of the parking lots and in, uh. This parking lot they're building. You know, some of the issues, you know, we asked like on the parking lot returning motions, they have a twenty-seven foot. They have dead end parking on here. You just need to know this, this works. You know, again, it's, it's a lot of. Well, again, back to the undotted eyes and uncrossties. You just need to have the level of detail to, to document that it does or it doesn't. Um, because we need to, you know, we need to reach that, um, we need to reach that conclusion as part of this. I'm not going to go through every item in here. There's, there's, you know, they, they touched on, I think, some of the more critical ones, but again, a lot of the responses. Are in the context, so they're going to address. There's a phase one environmental. There's buildings here, there are commercial use. Might be absolutely nothing wrong with it, like contaminated soil, we, we don't know. I mean, just, again. Um, we believe as part of act, action, they're going to remove the buildings, take material out. If there are contamin, if there is something that requires a phase two assessment. If there are standards, you have to know what those are in order for them to build this. They said they're importing a lot of fill. So they're going to have, I'm sure, be excavating out a lot of the existing material in order to put that fill in just to get stability. Through here. So there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of elements in this project that you don't typically find. In projects that you, you want to, again, they're not uncommon to run into in developing sites, but it is something that you don't typically.
Right.
You being the plumbing team that I said typically see in, in land development applications, so.
And has the preliminary?
Well, preliminary is, is an approval that all final is, is the filing for the map and whatnot. Preliminary is your approval to go ahead. Preliminary with conditions is your approval to go ahead and build some.
Right. And we would satisfy the conditions, right?
You can, it's up to the board to decide what those, those conditions. How far do they want to go in granting an approval subject to conditions? That's, that's up to the board.
Well, that was coming to my question because my, from your original, um, report. I calculated there were fifty-seven that haven't been addressed in this report, and I don't, I personally don't know whether I heard fifty-seven of those. Being cleared up tonight in the testimony. And even if you did, we, there's a lot of detail like, like you mentioned. The question I would, I guess, question this board needs to address on power and advisors. But preliminary to your. Preliminary, uh, is, is there more work that we need to see on these plans? Do these constitute a good set preliminary site plan? As they stand? Without all the.
You're going to ask me, have they complied with things? I'm not going to be able to tell you they've complied until I see. You know, the detail. So really, the question goes back to the board. What level of comfort? Do you feel in acting on something subject to? Um, you know, um, and, and there's certain elements of what certainly hasn't passed and probably couldn't, you know. The type of tree or whatever, you got to have four more, you know, things like that, you know, are typical. Of what might be, you know, subject to the approval of the board planner, the engineer, traffic engineer or whatever. But you normally would want to have, and again, this issue with the utilities, I wasn't aware, we want to know, we, board doesn't typically act. On a plan and you know that the borough order and sort of apartment has at least reached some level of comfort. Um, so that, you know, we, we know what they're doing. This idea of rerouting the sewer the other way. Sounds like it's very plausible, they have to look at it. But again, they're running a sewer through all this underground stormwater stuff. We have to know that it. It works. Um, so again, it's, it's just a lot of detail. Uh, and, and you're going to need to, you know, you're going to need to reach that level of detail. Before you can certainly sign off on the plan and the, the issue back to the board is. What do you want to know? What do you want to see? And what do you want to hear from us before you vote? That's, that's kind of the issue. I'm sure that has. Perfect. And Jay too, maybe something's next.
So Bob, can we move on to the professional? Is that, you have more questions than I, than that?
One thing, Eric, to your testimony. You, you're showing these buildings, one, one case, the building is fifteen and a half feet from the right away. And you're showing the sidewalk intruding in, in those instances, you're saying the sidewalk is not intruding more than six inches over the rail. You're basically, you're saying you're maintaining the eighteen foot, like eighteen foot long drive.
Correct.
Okay. That's, again, somebody else is going to need to be done with it.
No, and that's perfectly fine because I checked those dimensions after.
I think they dumped out that you did, it's just that it's not, you know.
Alright, I wish we could demonstrate with Jay, do you have any?
I just had, uh, just one clarification. There's only one RSIS waiver so far, which is just that sidewalk. Holding it on two sides going out. I, I, I mean, I take no exception to having one sidewalk out through Route twelve. But everybody can use that, but I just wanted to make sure there weren't any others. The, the, the one other one that comes to mind. Would surface through your DOT process of just the requirement to have twenty-five foot radii. At the intersection, Route twelve at the intersection. And there's a couple DOT access code. Dimensions that I don't think are going to be met either. So I'm very interested in what the DOT plans are going to look like, what they have to say. Um, in terms of their access code and in terms of what radius we end up with, uh, out on Route twelve. And that was it.
Thank you. I'm sure if I can, just for some clarification for the board, um. The M L U L has obviously its definitions and, and mindset for preliminary and final approvals. But your ordinance also has definitions of preliminary and final. And if we just look and focus on, on final. Just to kind of help the board a little bit, um, that's defined as the action of the board after. All conditions, plans and requirements have been completed and required improvements installed or guarantees posted. So the mindset is. Every issue that you feel that requires some additional information has already been addressed in preliminary. And final is kind of your end rubber stamp of everything being properly addressed and or still in or guaranteed posted.
So preliminary is the draft and then final is the final look. The preliminary, preliminary set, site, plan should be essentially.
Correct. And sometimes, and sometimes it may, as they're moving from preliminary to final, they need to come in and get amended preliminary. Because they're finding as they continue trying to comply with the conditions that they need some sort of changes along the way, field changes of life. Um, but that's, that's certainly what the mindset is and what your ordinance policy is.
In this case, you deal with a preliminary site plan and subdivision. So under the subdivision provisions of the coordination. There's a whole process for recording a map and then that's the point in time where they, these are going to be, you sort of heard this part in testimony. These are going to be individual lots that are going to be sold to individuals. So there's going to be an infrastructure put into ground. For the most part, exclusively private infrastructure, uh, it's going to be maintained by a homeowners association, but that's going to have to be in place at some point. Or it's going to have to be bonded and guaranteed under the statutory provisions. To allow for the recording, the filing of the map that actually establishes. The properties that could then at that point be finally sold. So you, you, you're dealing, and again, you don't deal with a lot of subdivisions in the borough. Uh, I can't think of the last one you've not provided in the year, and you dealt with one. This magnitude, um, but, um, that's, that's what you're, that's what you're going to have to do.
Right. Well, it's beyond what we know. It's some.
I don't understand that, but it's something that you know.
Uh, okay. Can I come down and say one more thing?
Sure. I have a handful of questions. First, I, in terms of sidewalks, and we talked a lot about how there's one, one side of sidewalks for a portion of the cul-de-sac. But I actually want to talk about how those sidewalks are going to connect to Route twelve. Across the front of the property, there's been some sidewalk along, along the state highway. And I just felt the point that there's going to be a connection from this property, a property line, something that is not going to work. That's either controlable or something that will be a problem.
It's part of proposal.
It is?
Yes.
Uh, and the examiner has already mentioned that there are going to be. Only one, I'm going to be right, that you're going to remove those trenches along portions, some are all the receiving now.
So what you were looking to do at the back, essentially where the water flows.
Along the homes that are facing this route though?
Yes.
Okay.
On our property, that is.
Right.
Basically an infiltration trench.
On one side of the retaining wall, on the side facing the property line or on the side facing the, um.
Property line side.
Okay. And that will be a stone trench you ended with?
Correct.
And how wide is that?
It does need to be more than maybe twelve to eighteen inch wide, eighteen inches wide primarily just to remove any potential bonding in that area.
Okay. Um, I'm interested, uh, I have questions about what the appearance of that will be and further how that will impact the landscaping. That's proposed in that area. You have buckers proposed in that area that I believe are part of. Uh, an area that does not, in part, is not above the twenty-five foot buffer requirement. And so I'm concerned that the trenches in that location. May further reduce conformity with that buffer.
Okay.
Also. In the lighting testimony that you provided, I, I don't think you said the color temperature of the lights, I believe are LED. Can you refresh my memory if they're, if.
It's not specified. It will be probably twenty-seven hundred.
I know.
Right. It's the normal softer yellow or light that we generally use instead of getting a more passing range.
That's right. Yeah. My, my typical request is less than three thousand or less. But you said approximately seven hundred?
Correct.
And, um, the gentleman also, the department will be outdoor areas for each of the townhomes and. Perhaps this was, uh, speaking too quickly by Mr. Barbieri, but I believe in the testimony that the homeowner association. Would maintain the property with the exception of the four building walls and probably including the driveway as well, but I'm. I'm not clear on, on what area will be subject to common, uh, common open space as part of the owner association. What area will be subject to private open space for the, the, the homeowners?
So, I think in terms of the outdoor area, we were just. So I think in terms of the outdoor area, we were just looking at the backyards, essentially that would be available for use. Um, it would still be part of the open space, but. Like typical open spaces that you would have in large development where the open spaces develop and open to everyone. We don't really envision this type of functioning that way. Because it's really not like the condominium type development or the parking building type development where. Essentially, everyone is confined to a unit and then everything else surrounding it is open. These are more envisioned to be family type residences where if they needed less differences in dwell on the, in their backyard. Then yes, would be part of the open space or in the open space area, but it would just be behind their house.
Can we clarify that, cause that's not what your plan is representing? Your plan is representing this common open space lot where you're putting the parking lot, whatever in that. Southwest corner of the property. The other common element is the street, which would be a private street. The representation here is that these are individual lots, if I bought one of these lots, I own the entire lot, there's no other common element. There's no open space on my lot. What there could be on my lot is a, is a drainage facility that's. Owned and maintained by the homeless association or retaining wall. That's owned and maintained by the home association, but no other property aren't as rights to my property. Is that, is that a fair assessment? I own my driveway. I own my unit, obviously. I own whatever behind my unit that is property.
So in terms of the ownership, you are correct. I think what we were envisioning and. To answer Beth's question in terms of what the HOA would maintain. So the HOA basically maintains everything outside of the building walls.
They maintain my lawn?
Yes.
What about the grill there? That might be.
Yeah, so.
Then that, then you're gonna have to represent that, that's not represented on these plans. If that's the intent, you need, you know, you need to represent that. Um, that the area behind the house is a common open space area.
Well, I think that's different, I don't think he's saying common open space, I think he's saying an area to be maintained by the HOA, owned by the individual property owners.
Okay. Well, again, that needs to be clear, you know, at some point, it has to be digitally documented filed so they know exactly what they're doing. Just like you asked, we all, all, all in documentation provided for the stormwater, so we know who's, you know, just what those responsibilities are.
We have a couple of questions for the board. One of the questions I asked was the previous coverage for the total tract, the ones the individual tracks. The, uh, the ordinance requires maximum of seventy percent, however, it's also subject to section points thirty-seven. Of the ordinance that requires five percentage, twenty percent big point reduction, so it's only seventy-three. Uh, fifty percent unless you have a certain condition that are met on the property.
This is a major stormwater, major, um, development, you've got stormwater regulations, you're gonna have to.
So they should be.
Uh, they don't, they, yeah, we can't grant, they're a major project, it's subject to regulations, we can't claim the waiver.
Okay, with that, we understand what you're talking about, it's seventy percent is the maximum public cover that's.
We have another provision, you know, where.
Which is doubling it? I can't hear what I'm saying.
We have another provision of ordinance for properties that. Don't meet the threshold under the stormwater regulations for a ma- a major project. Under the stormwater regulations is disturbance of an acre of land or a creation of a half an acre of impervious coverage. This project falls within that criteria. We have another provision that that's referred to in our ordinance. That says that you disturb more than two thousand square feet or any more than two hundred square feet in impervious coverage. In impervious surfaces, you're subject to those regulations. So you're not subject to state regulations, but we have a lower threshold. For a lot of the smaller develops, you've heard in some prior reports. Where some of these things, something small, but they're subject, but our regulations are not the same as the state regulations. Ours fall under the land use regulations and they have the provisions that Beth is talking about that says. You, there's certain things you need to do. To meet that, you know, to have that, uh, that, that accommodate that additional disturbance in, in impervious surface, albeit relatively small. Uh, and, but if you don't need it, then, then you have to reduce, or when this is allowed seventy percent impervious surface. If you can't meet those stormwater, they, then you only can do fifty percent.
So where are we? After taking all that information, where?
In fact, that, that's irrelevant, cause your, your, your major application, they gotta deal with the state stormwater.
So, so they have, they're allowed to accept these, and where are they? That is, that, now that we've had the discussion, that is my question.
Exactly, that's on my lips.
Yeah.
So I don't have the exact percentage, um, but what I can tell you, it's one point, uh. One point one acre of impervious coverage that's being proposed and the property is about two point four acres. So it's probably about forty-five percent. But I can certainly, part of the plan provisions will document all of the coverages.
It's equally important, if you are proposing, if you're allowing. She's part of the site plan, you should be showing, if you're permitting patios. Uh, and other, if again, if I buy one of these lots and I wanna put a pickleball court in the backyard, if that's gonna be allowed. You need to take that into account with, you know, with, with the stormwater. Again, your homeowners association, it's made, what you're planning to do there, it's like. If, if it's an additional impervious surface, your plan needs to take that into consideration, otherwise. When you go for a building permit or somebody goes to do something, they're gonna be precluded from building it because your stormwater facilities weren't designed for that.
Right.
To accommodate that.
As part of the documentation, I just wanna be clear, we want confirmation of the total tract.
Understood.
Another question I have is for the retaining walls, uh. I mean, I recommend a safety rail for, for those that are, uh, above a certain height perhaps, but three feet. And I'd like to see a detail of that.
Okay. I think the plan's called for safety rails, something like that, greater than forty, something like that.
Maybe don't be provided.
With a handrail?
Yeah. You indicated that traffic will be handled by the individual units, but I presume a trash truck will, uh, go through the culminac at one twenty percent to provide pickups?
Correct.
And that, will that be handled privately? Or?
Um. I'm not quite sure how we're gonna handle that, we certainly work out the deals with the borough if it's, if the borough can pick up, will pick up refuse within a private street. Um, if that's, if that's an option for us, certainly that's the direction we will go, otherwise it'll be a private hauler.
Is it gonna be parked in the street?
So the street is thirty feet wide, so we're not proposing any on free parking. But even in the event of a delivery truck or trash truck having to stop and pick up refuse. It still leaves us about twenty feet of pavement for traffic to pass, so it's not.
Was there something from, I'm, I'm going way back in time, was there something from the fire marshal about work with restrictions? The truck access? Or my, my thinking or something else? Well, if, if they're right, you're in.
Yeah.
And the parking lot. The parking lot you quoted is just for residents, parking, visitor parking and things of that.
Yes.
Okay, not for recreational vehicles and boats or anything. And that'll be in the documentation.
Well, the documents is, are you, you know, that works professional.
Do you mean the HOA documents?
Reach away documents, all that manual, everything to the satisfaction of the professionals.
This is, yeah, I'm, a minor, potentially minor item, I, I heard you said you worked for houses and warehouses, but I was curious. Do you have a sense as to whether or not that's gonna require an additional structure on the property or?
I don't know at this time.
If it does, you need to show it.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's my concern, I just wanna see where that's ultimately, so we can find. There may, I believe there are some locations where three trees are in conflict with some utilities in the right of ways, so if there's gonna be a. Updated submission of landscape plan, I'd ask that we can work with that. I do think that's something the board is, uh, that's something that's worked with us, probably necessary, we have a significant complexity that there's might be adjusted. Additionally, in regards to the lighting tools, I noticed that there's a releasing a concrete base of, uh, making it sticky to the receiving. I would see that something they would do it from the appearance of the light bulb and also bring the face down. Any light bulbs, I don't know.
So certainly adjust the base so that it's. Like a great, if that's preferable.
Yeah.
In terms of the height of the light, uh.
It seems necessarily for an adjustment as a piece of the device, you just date the whole thing, it will come down.
Absolutely, we can certainly adjust the base.
Do you provide any light production in the bottom face, further away, any production and.
I think right now we're thinking about having just at one left. Um, certainly with these fixtures and what we've discussed is. In terms of when the fixtures are ordered and installed, most of the new light fixtures on the market, they're wireless, wirelessly controlled and also they're dimmable. So our recommendation, my recommendation to the developers is that. When we order the fixtures, we'll have those features built into them so that if there is a need for the HOA. To adjust the lighting, it doesn't require changes to the fixtures, it's all done, that's on it.
And then the last question, and I think this, to be fair, I think it might be, uh, perhaps a better question for your planner. But in early part of your testimony, you addressed one of the, uh, I would say one of the significant design requirements for the site, which is rear access. Or rear loaded townhouses, and those to the front loaded townhouses that are proposed. And I think there was some testimony, uh, in regard to, in order to provide stormwater management, et cetera, that design was required, but. Um, I'd love to hear more detail and I'll, I'll defer to you as to whether or not some, that's something that we wanna provide or whether that's. Um, it's really a fundamental, it's a fundamental design issue that is present in this application.
Understood, and our planner will certainly provide you the testimony regarding that.
All my questions.
Uh, do you have any additional? Okay, so let's go through the boards, um. Uh, Paul, and Jeff's been going to the online people, um, initially, so Hannah, can I continue? Does, do you have any questions for this witness?
Not, I'm sorry, not right now, yeah, I'll pass on for that, thank you.
Okay. All right, Michael, Mike?
No, thank you.
Okay, all right. Jim?
Well, well, I think I can put it on pause on this. Get to my questions.
Okay, all right. Ben?
Oh, yes.
Just four pages.
Um, so. They're not necessarily in order, I think they're writing all over the place, right, space, but. Um, you said that Eric, that the retaining wall. Um, is gonna be in from the property line on the north and south sides, by how much?
So. It's the north and the east and.
So you said on the east side, it was gonna be right on the property.
One portion of it at the end of the south side.
Okay.
Um, on the south side. So I do not have the setback in the property line dimension. Um, I certainly provide them with revised plans or scale and.
I think you certainly need to provide them on the revised plan. And you said that the nice side is gonna be facing the neighbors. On all of the walls, including. All of them, right, all of them are gonna be, and is there gonna be landscaping on the neighbor's side on the? North and south and east? Well, you can't do any landscaping on the east, cause you're having right on the property. You can't have any landscaping. Like, maybe, maybe landscaping on the neighbor's side of Buddy Route 12.
Yes, on the lower side of the wall, the side facing the neighbors will have landscaping.
So they're gonna have the nice side of the wall and they're gonna have landscaping.
Yes.
With the east side where there's also residential homes on Main Street, it's gonna be right on their property line?
One section will, yes.
One section will be right on. Okay. Um, this. I think you indicated, but you didn't say clearly, this site does require a DEP general permit number six?
Correct.
Um, what's involved in getting that permit?
So a general permit number six is for filling them isolated wetlands. And DEP has restrictions that the wetline has to be, you know, under half of an acre. And primarily it has to be isolated, meaning it's not connected by springs or it's not connected to another wetline area.
So this will be the permit that gives you the permission to fill. Right?
Yes.
And you have to use clean fill in the law?
So the term of the, when I use the term filled relative to the general permit, it's basically eliminate the wet. It's not a matter of putting material in the wetland. The material or the fill that's necessary to build at this site is going to be clean filled. Any material that's brought in has to be documented and certified as clean filled, otherwise we cannot use stolen property.
So you don't need the DEP's approval to do the stormwater system?
So this project will be, because part of any general permit or DEP land use permits, when it's being reviewed. If it's a major stormwater project, it falls under their jurisdictions for stormwater.
So they do have to permit this?
Yes.
Under the new regulations?
That I don't know, I suspect answers yes.
Have you applied for that yet?
No.
And the answer is yes. So if you had already applied for it. A year ago and they had reviewed it, then you would have been safe, but they held all, all reviews for a year until the new rules kicked in. So the answer is you're gonna have to comply by all new rules, so, because you did not apply. Uh, I'm pretty confident about that statement, um. Boy, I wish it'd be my own, ready, um. So you also said that. The, you were gonna have these, the bio, in the, the inlet bio retention system. Where are they on your plan? Are they between the townhomes? Um, the bio retention, the, the, the water cleaning bio retention systems, where are they?
They're along the roadway and they're dispersed along the roadway.
Are they going to be landscaped?
Yes. So typically with these stormscaped units, they're planted with trees or shrubs. And the planting issue on other drawings, but that's essentially the landscaping, it's. There's not a lot of vegetation that you can put in them, because the planting area is relatively small. But all of the inlets and the sizing and the design criteria is subject to DEP approval and they have been certified to provide the required total suspended solid removal.
Okay, so a question I have is, if you're gonna put in this stormwater system, this, I think, underground throughout this project. How use? Are you letting the neighbors, the, the new owners, do what they want in their backyard, which aren't, that aren't their backyards? Somebody wants to plant a tree. How does anybody know they're not planting it on top of one of these pipes? It's then gonna grow and break through the pipe with its.
So it's not against all the issues that you generally have with sprays and sanitary sewer primarily. Typically with storm drainage systems, we don't see that problem. Um, under normal circumstances, you would generally keep your storm drainage and your eastward area clear, because. Typically it's your municipality or some other entity that comes in and they're responsible for maintenance and they don't wanna have to remove trees. If they need to do any type of repair or maintenance on an inlet or drainage system. All of the drain, or all of these areas are gonna be, as part of the homeowners association document. We're gonna be restricting what can and cannot be done in certain areas. Including where the pipes are, including where the inlets are. EO, ETO documents are gonna stipulate what you can and cannot do. For small landings, those are perfectly fine. It's typically what you would find in most of these seasons now anyway. Large plantings, large trees, no, they're not going to be permitted.
So one of, one of my comments, so you know, there was kind of a brush off on the environmental commission's report, which I read when they first submitted it. I don't remember it. But I do remember they had a comment about removing so many big trees and not replacing them. As Plummington is a heat island, you are seven degrees warmer than American township. And you are going to be forbidding not only water sucking plants. A good tree sucks up 50 gallons of water in a day, but also not allowing cooling trees to be planted, please comment.
So we are, and you're correct, Mary, that we are removing trees on the property.
Big trees, lots of.
There are large trees on the property, ground a permit, we will be removing to build this particular development. But we're also planting a lot of additional landscaping, street trees along the new roadway, we're planting trees along the back, along the perimeter of the property. In addition to the trees, there's going to be trouble, there's going to be planted on the property. So we're not able to replace a 30 inch tree or a 24 inch tree, but we're certainly planting a significant amount of vegetation to compensate for the ones that were removed.
But perhaps to the design to save a lot of those trees and plant within those trees. Let me keep looking. So talking about removing and not needing half of the project sidewalks, that it would just add to more imperious coverage. We don't talk about the fact that you want 18 townhomes on two acres, adding a lot of imperious coverage, but we're talking about a bunch of sidewalks without any, any at all amenities to this complex of 18, which is an island, right? Route 12 is an island. Nobody's running across the street and taking life in their hands. I would love to ask the homeowners at some point, if they ever go across the street and walk it down, to go use any park we're going to put in over on Brown Street to Liberty Village subdivision. With the absence of that, dog walkers and new moms with baby strollers, not having a full rounded circle and I'd go off here eliminating the only means of real recreation in this complex. Aren't you?
I will not point you on the introductory.
I had to answer you some questions, so that's why I asked.
So maybe just one of the ones I did, I just want the record to reflect that the scenario is, you know.
I have an appointment about this appointment early in the morning. No, I'm sorry, guys.
Larry, I did tell her that she would have to listen to the rest of the team. I'll talk to her about that.
Yeah. Good night, guys.
Question.
All right. Yeah, so I, I mean, I know there are sounds. Their report, I'm not equipped to look on that anymore. What is my walking pace rate? Um. We had the answer on the, the permit, but you don't know the amount. So, so you have a question for you. You mentioned that we got in under the wire regarding stormwater ordinance. I'm technical, because you said they, we, they don't have.
They were deemed to complete on July 11th, right? It's in my report. Deemed to complete, take a conversation, July 11th. The new rules went into effect on July 17.
These are the state rules.
The state, the state rule.
And you're saying they don't have to comply with these states?
If they're deemed to complete, there was a complete application file. Now, what we just heard here tonight is that they have DEP permits for wetlands. Now, if, if in fact, if you're correct in that, that gives DEP jurisdiction to review the stormwater regulations, DEP may vary. Since you haven't filed that application, that DEP may be reviewing this, which means this whole thing has to be designed under the current regulations.
Right. I think, and they think it does, because I know Liberty Village does.
Not saying it doesn't.
They also have it applied, so.
Well, again, we're operating under RSIS. They were deemed to complete the week before. And again, it wasn't, we didn't know when the new rules were, despite what they had deemed to complete on July 11th. DEP publishing their, their regulation, their regulations on July 17th. We have another complication coming in after this that didn't meet that deadline. They're, they're doing it under the new regulations.
That question was answered. I mean, one of my questions on, even though they may not have to comply with all of the flooding that Plummington has been experiencing and it's only getting worse, shouldn't they have to comply? Yeah. I mean, it's just getting worse and worse and worse, so.
No, we don't remember whether they, I'm sorry, whether they filed with us.
They have, they guess.
Not whether they got the papers from us, the two days ago, are they?
Yeah, they, they are.
So you're saying that because they didn't file for that permit, stormwater would stay, then they, they, they.
Not only did they, not only did they file the permit, because they didn't get the permit.
Right.
Right? So Liberty Village filed the permit and it was sad. Everybody's review was sad.
To relevant, when we did complete this, that the date is the application.
Probably to the DEP, it's no, they don't care.
Yeah, and if, if DEP has equal jurisdiction to review stormwater because of the necessity for the DEP permit, then they're going to have to file, they're going to have to design this under that new set of criteria.
You don't have the DEP.
No, we have not filed for any of them. Correct.
No, I think, at the end of the question, no questions.
So what a piece of engineering from a water perspective. So my question is, so three to four feet of raised grade around the entire property based on the ability to both convey water and to keep your own stormwater under control. So you testified that, all in layman's terms, the flooding is going to be better. It's not going to happen based on, you know, based on your 10, going in, I think we went to part of 100. That you're confident that what you're, the infrastructure you're building on this property will solve the water dilemma on this property?
Yes.
Given that, if there wasn't 18 units and grills, trees, whatever, to develop this property, would you have to put that infrastructure in if you decided to place something else on this property? Would you still have to do that infrastructure from a water perspective?
Yes, because it doesn't change the fact that you have to discharge on grade. And stormwater has to flow by gravity. There, there's just no other method.
So regardless of 18 units, one unit, 10 units, 100 units of 30 foot highs, size here.
Correct.
Barn, ice skating rink. Anything developed on this property would have to have a new infrastructure put in from a DEP's going with them.
Yes.
And thank you. And, and from a connection perspective, there is what looks to be a connection from Raritan Township that dead ends right at the property. No, no desire to have that easement open?
The roadway?
Yeah.
So originally, we were in contact with the HOA prior to filing any of the application or design work with this board. We reviewed the process or the project with the HOA. We attempted to acquire an easement to tie our storm drainage system directly into theirs. And we were unable to.
Okay, sorry, not a stormwater man, I've, I've done from, from, from an e- ingress and egress perspective. There is a road that dead ends of this property that had to have the, the foresight to say sooner or later we'll connect it to something. No, no desire there? It would, it's right at the, the small notch of your property. I'm, I'm just curious, I, I mean, you said no, and so I'm asking, like again, my question is, really? With a big question part?
We did have conversations with the HOA.
The HOA within Raritan Township of the subdivision to the south.
Correct.
And they don't want it.
I do not, we, I know we spoke about stormwater management. I do not know if we spoke about extending, certainly I didn't speak to them about extending their roadway onto this property.
Because wouldn't that solve one of your issues of ingress and egress?
Yes.
And and there are, and likewise, looking for a solution for ingress and egress. As a question, I'm sorry. I don't have any more questions.
I have no question.
Okay. Well, I said, I don't have any question. You definitely presented a lot of information and I'll be taken back to the environmental committee. I suspect that we will have an additional note for you guys for coming, so.
Absolutely.
Oh, Eric, I, help me, help me out here with this. I'm, I'm curious with the groundwater recharge system. So you've got 2.4 acres. You said what, 1.1 is covered by imperious?
Correct.
Yeah, how do you, how did you calculate the size of the detention basin? So you, you based it off of what, history of storms or when you, when you do something like this, how do you, how do you calculate? How do you know how large to make something like this or for something of this nature? So I'm just, I'm curious.
So procedurally, what you have to do is look at the site in its current form. And we determine what the various drainage areas are on site, off site. And you calculate the amount of runoff that occurs under the current conditions, which is what the stormwater regulations require us to do. Once we know what those numbers are, so for instance, this is representative, but puts it to report, but let's say we calculate it and for the two years from the site produces one CFS. The code requires you to reduce that by 50%. So once I build this project, I can only have, as, as my peak discharge, 50% of one, half a CFS. So knowing what the target number is, the software that we don't use, it's called Hydroflow. It's one of the software, there are other softwares that are used in the industry. But you then start, essentially, it's an iterative process where in this particular case, I know I have a certain area that I can put this detention system in. There's a length and there's a width that it has to fit in. The only thing that I have some control over, just given all of the other utilities that have to go into place, is how deep the system can be. And once I input those parameters, then you go back and you recalculate what all of your developed conditions are going to be. And that developed condition is going to produce a certain leak rate and a certain volume of runoff. You take that volume and then you put it into this storage system. And we have control over how much water leaves the system. And that's going to be when you design the outlet structure. You tell the software, well, okay, I want the outlet pipe to be 15 inches in length. But upstream of that pipe, there's a control structure and it basically has different sized holes in it. And based on the size of that hole, it will only allow a certain amount of water through it. Everything else has to be stored within that system. So it's that storage that you're trying to figure out. And you play with the numbers. In this particular case, I have control of the depth. Because if I need three feet of depth in order to make my final output number work, you'll set it at that. If the result, when you run the software or run the program, if it says I have 0.60 CFS, okay, I know my storage isn't enough. Because normally my process is I start with the smallest orbit, which is two and a half inches. And if that doesn't work, I can't reduce that any further. So my only other option is to increase the amount of storage. And you go through that process essentially for all of the storms.
Play out like a, like a obvious scenario. I just, I was wanting to show you that the elements in the, you know, the detention basin. It can get. Report this storm with what inch per hour, inch and a half?
Yeah, nine inches in 45 minutes, 11 inches overall.
Something ridiculous like that. So the detention basin, you know, is able to handle these, you know, one offs that happen. I mean, if this were to, the storm were to come here, can detention basin handle a one off storm, you know, here and there? And, and how reliable is it? It's going to break down, would it, does it work? And tell me more about how reliable the detention basin is, in those types of things.
So we typically don't model those types of events. DEP has established all of the storm vents that we need to utilize. And they're not using those quote unquote one off, because I had a face to lose a 500 years storm or greater than that. And nowhere in the state of New Jersey will you design infrastructure for a 500 years storm. Otherwise, you will never have any development. That's why in situations like that, they're one off vents. And you make provisions to pass it through them. Because frankly, you're an item, whether the site is 100% covered or 100% vegetated, it is not going to make any difference to the downstream property because having 11 inches of rainfall in such a short period of time, under normal circumstances with a 24 hour storm, you typically only have about an inch and a half of that runoff that actually infiltrates into the ground. Everything else runs off. I had never seen one of the detention basins that I've designed personally, any of these storm vents. When I've had the opportunities to go out and look at them, where they've actually overflowed. Usually the water stays in the basin and the control structures, it's flowing through the control structure. You're welcome.
Yeah, I just got a follow up question. Where does that, where does it actually tie? This, when it goes out, where is it actually tying into? Is it tying into Plummington's stormwater system where township's out on Main Street? Where's it actually going to connect?
So our stormwater flows into the condos association property. They have their own stormwater infrastructure in Raritan Township that manages their runoff.
So they, they're granting you an easement into that?
We do not need an easement. All of our stormwater presently from this site, absent anything that the developer does, flows into and through that property. Our requirement is, we have to look at how much water was going there now and then we apply those reduction factors to it. So when we design our system, we are reducing it to below what's flowing there presently.
And I'm trying to visualize it, it's a pipe, right? Ultimately, there's a pipe that's going into their pipe?
No, no. No, we cannot tie in directly into their system.
Okay.
So that's why this project requires the amount of fill that it does, because we cannot connect into their system.
So where does the water go?
It flows overland into their property, which is where it's going presently.
Okay. And you take their system?
Yes. You're welcome.
Everybody with a great questions covered most of mine. I do still want clarification. I think Beth touched on it. You mentioned the, the trench on the south line and then, but now your landscape plan shows lots of landscape there. I'm kind of asked, but I really wasn't clear on what you said had, how it was going to interact. Because currently, there's, so you, you've mentioned there's going to be a disturbed trench plus this landscape, that's right?
Correct.
But we don't know how they interact.
And I think it's unfair, we're going to likely see plans that look like that for this trench?
Correct.
And also with landscaping on here, you're showing somebody asked about trees and you said, you know, the word for that, trees to be planted by the owners. Don't, won't these interfere with your retention system?
No.
Along the side of the road?
No.
Are they part of the bio system, this, this landscaping or not exactly?
No, they're separate.
Okay.
The plantings that you see along the roadway, they're actually on outside of the right of way.
Right.
Whereas the detention system is located within the main.
Did you? You got here, Mike, you, the crosswalk was mentioned, I've written that down, that you provide a crosswalk before, because you're only providing sidewalk to Route 12 on the north side of the, this road, new roadway. You're going to provide a crosswalk A-Day accessible, did you say, close to the? And then electric vehicles were mentioned, and you mentioned that electric vehicles for the buildings, for the units, the owner would be able to add that in, that would be, but wouldn't that, would, would that be aligned by the HOA? To put, for individuals to put charging units into that, you'd have to write that into the HOA agreement, they're allowed to do that one thing.
And there's also in the AV law that was enacted by the state, there are certain restrictions that they impose on HOAs not permitting certain things like that in order to encourage homeowners, the same way that they impose them being allowed accessory uses. them being allowed as accessory uses in any zone in the township. They limit the ability of an HOA to say that they can't ease on.
Oh, okay. So that's kind of covered.
I can't think of the specifics, but.
I guess, as long as.
I just have one announcement. Um, my campaign, um, left meeting.
Yeah, and we do, um, we're getting very late, I agree, but I think it's really good to have got this testimony at the way we would normally try to go this late. And I especially want to allow the public now to speak. Um, can I just remind you, this is, um, questions, not comments.
Yes.
On this testimony. So any, if you don't understand about what he said.
Okay.
Feel free to come up. By track, you've been waiting a long time, but we're talking all about minutes, but please ask your questions, but we are looking forward to it. Again, handy for the, for the tape, can you state the name and then?
Yes, Lady Lane, and my address is fourteen Parker Avenue, twenty ten, Jersey. My questions are, you're only going to do the sidewalk, you're not going all through the whole development for a sidewalk?
No, so the sidewalk starts.
Why would you do that? What if there's families with children?
No, sidewalk is throughout the development.
It's going all through the development that they can come all to get the school bus that is not going to go into that development?
Yes, the sidewalk will be around.
The sidewalk will be all the way through. And at the entrance, what are you planning on doing for the children that have to stand there to be picked up? As a safety feature, because the bus is long, there's a train track there. So what are you planning on doing with that building part of it? They've got to be safe. There's a lot of kids that are latchkey kids. They don't have a mom and dad to walk up to the bus stop. So just, that's my questions.
Thank you. Anybody on the line? Um, if you want to make a, a question with this witness, could you please use the raise hand function online? Seeing, oh, Beth, you have a question.
But I could have a question.
Okay, we'll, we'll do it now. We'll understand.
But the, the last question reminded me of something. I mean, forgive me, I don't really answer to this. So my first question is for the board. Is there bus like this or Uber driving in the?
Yes.
So, so, so a, a third grader will get picked up by a bus at this site, I suppose to have him walk to an elementary.
Yeah, but they would, yes, there's some pretty people, but I'm just imagining, I'm, I'm, and because they're on Route twelve, I would go down, they would be bussed anyway.
That's why I just wanted to confirm. I hadn't thought that children might have to walk from the site to the school. I just wanted to confirm that.
It's usually a mile, like, like turns from my house to, um, R F S, my kids can get a bus. But if, if you, I think the main, because it's a major route, they'll have to.
They would be, they would be on a bus because my kid's going to be on a bus when he goes and we're, I'm on ninety six, I'm on Main Street, right, right there. We're right on that line. So they would be right there too. So they would be on a bus as well.
But that's still a valid point about, um, the bus needing to stop. I mean, that long, we won't have, but that would, it would stop on Route twelve. Um, probably wouldn't come down this development, I would imagine.
No.
Now that being said, so that really we're done with this witness, so we just, right?
Yeah, make sure everybody has, has to. All hung out in each question.
I have a question though. If we, as a board, feel that all these points, where a lot of points came up, very amazing, the original questions, unanswered things from the clerks. Um, genuinely thought were sixty eight. A lot of things we've asked this witness to add to the, the drawing. You know, I'm.
I know where you're going with this.
Do we ask, are we allowed to ask each of them to consider resubmitting our new set with everything covered that we've said? We have a really good set. And then thinking back in after, I mean, took a bit of time, have the planner and everybody comment next time, but then we are a set, we can work out with all of it. Can we ask that?
I can certainly recommend, recommend to the applicant and council that this is what the boards would like to see.
Right.
Um, and they can evaluate whether or not that makes sense to go that route or come back and still have the board want to see certain things. Um, I think they're hearing what you have to say.
So because usually when we have a plan, we, we have some amendments. There's maybe a list, it's a reasonable list. But I've never seen it more than like fifteen items that we ask people to like uncover. Right now I feel that, I, I'm just guessing, it must be approaching a hundred questions, everything that you're doing there. And so I'm, I'm just thinking, I don't know what the rest of the board feel about that, but like, we'd like to see set plans that truly reflect what this proj- project is going to be based on.
So I guess the question is, you now have two or a couple of different options.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the applicants here are reading what the board has to say. Uh, we would carry it to application, or should we carry it to the next meeting? Does the applicant want to pick a date down the road that would give them sufficient time to amend plans, get them back for review and comment? Take a date down the road, which we could always continue to extend, but instead of doing it peacefully, we usually would go to the next meeting. We want to put it a month or two months out and we'll deal with it that way.
Right.
Uh, um, so we can have, you know, maybe let them.
Or do they, whatever, and they go, it's too full and that's.
I would have mentioned.
They spend so much time being needing to. Um.
I, I would, I would see if there is a, maybe that you know, um, testimony. They want to see from the best changes or to player, or the player may have different testimony based upon those changes.
I think the second meeting in March.
We want, we want to close this. Yeah, we have architectural testimony as well, but I think if we want to, uh, do that as well, if you don't.
I think we have to go, Eric, just finish this answer.
I, I think you're right. I think this is a lot of possible projects to be answered. Yeah, that's what comes after.
Everything hinges on what he says, planner, otherwise it's going to be top scouts all over the place. We need to finish with him.
Okay. So, so do you feel that you know, and have everything that we've commented on that you feel that we do need to, in, re jot, if, add, add on?
Uh, I was just saying, yeah, you want to have a meeting.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. I just wanted, I just wanted to go ahead, not when then we miss something. But yeah, um, just a, so we could trust.
And what we'll do is, you can have, you can have a dialogue with the minutes. In the next meeting, we'll also be available at the best unit, so that's the view, then, you know, we can take a look at that and kind of see and be, you know, Eric knows us and then the applicants can also like always reach out and.
Right. And everybody asks questions, thank you. You know, when the early times come, like in subject.
Yeah.
Really appreciate that, you know, and it's like that way going forward. So we're looking to, yeah, the twenty sixth of March.
Yeah.
Twenty sixth of March, you know, it's, it's, it's March twenty sixth.
We'll make, we'll make an announcement as you carry. We'll do that, right? So, yeah, if you want to.
You can, you do it. I, I asked, so we're going. You say.
Okay, so we're going to adjourn this application to the March twenty sixth meeting of the board. Same time, seven o'clock, no further notice. So everyone that's here, you won't be getting any other notice on the application, but that's the next date. Um, it can be carried after that, but some announcement or presentation will be made that.
Okay. Um, okay. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Right, that would be absolutely.
That actually loves, yeah.
It was very late. That was, yeah. Eighteen minutes, I think.
And actually, we haven't seen anything from the station. Why can't we go all those? Everyone, we haven't seen all things around it though. I care. Maybe I lost my. Um, so I was, so I had items.
Well, eventually I have like a more next meeting.
For you is. Probably every team that changes, everybody that.
And what do we talk on?
Uh, we will have that informal review for specifics, cat, cat amount, um, that's on Broad Street. Uh, subdivision. Chick-fil-A, I believe is, is noticing. Um, we've also, we possibly could have the, uh, public hearing for Central Station. Um, we not getting, um, review of the report from the H P C or, okay, we're worried.
Right, we definitely have to depend on.
Um. Yeah. Cat of sixty six, cat of.
Like coming for an informal review of where it's going to be feasible, it's on Broad Street. They have a, there's a subdivision and they have a garage at the back and they want to build on that. Some, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I don't know.
Horrible.
Yeah, it goes towards, yeah.
Um, and then, uh, possibly, I mean, I think I, uh, then February twenty seventh, uh, Goldman Martin Homes was going to announce about that meeting as well. Um, we do have a zoning appeal, um, that was submitted, uh, uh, for the zoning decision. But it, they're an LLC and they, they don't have, they weren't represented by a majority. So until, um, I, I forget the, it's.
I don't remember either. While you're living.
Sixty six cat to. Kind of amount.
Um, I'm hearing that's non-conforming use, so they can't come in for it.
Oh, okay.
They're going to have to file it out.
That's, but it's a four family house that just some of my property makes it more affordable.
Okay, okay. Then, I, you, I will let them know tomorrow.
I think that, but, but, but the, the property that I'm thinking of, there's an entire lot next to it.
The damage is on the lot.
Yeah, we ship a brandy, we discuss everything.
They want to sell to them.
They just be horses and, and use a pretty good small.
And if you sell them, if you have an existing non-conforming use, you provide the property to make it smaller lot, it's automatically a deed.
You're getting a more non.
Yeah, expansion of non-conforming use potentially.
So, so, um, how many can we let them now? Yeah, they have to follow my, some of that.
Yeah. They, they have to be able to. Given the water was, they would have been last one.
I don't have any more chat. Thank you very much. This is unusual. We all.
Great, sorry.
You all have, it's still like this, but if you want to get that money.
Right.
So, yeah, if they're not coming for that, like, we can maybe put H P C on that.
For.
At the next meeting.
At the next meeting. Um, have, yeah, we can discuss that. It, it was just Chick-fil-A in that, uh, well, we don't have the information. Um.
But we can talk.
I don't know, but yeah, we'll, we'll find out.
I will.
How much, how do you?
Chat items, I have some needs to chat to you guys. Do what we need to talk about because I'll be in touch.
Please do.
Um, you know my, you know my number. I might answer the phone. I just, I'm amazed, the whole thing will work on that. Um, oh no. So, I, I'd say, do you in Bell's List have a motion to approve the bill?
Motion to audit the bill.
Motion to audit the bill, send for my.
Don't approve it.
Please don't approve anything. The slide saw, maybe only only one of them. Second, thank you. All in favor?
Uh, for now, we're not, we're not. Even though we're not approving them.
You don't approve.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mayor Carroll. Uh, Councilwoman Tressaro.
Yes.
Uh, campaigners, well, just, uh, this given.
Yes.
Mr. Hell.
Julie.
Ms. Weitzman.
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Zmina.
Yes.
The Swingoff.
Yeah.
And.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. All, and they need to go to a next session today. Thank goodness. And thanks, Whitey, turning to a journal.
Shall move up. Right now, I'm sorry. Now, just.
Go again, oh, yeah. He'll never come back again.
Wait, we need to stop.
I'm a little, I'm a little late. And they have a fall party, but I'm, 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 so I will leave this so late and have no other, they're coming next year.